Okay, good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for October 7th, 2024. I am the Chair, Eric Eldridge. The following meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Tingsboro Media. The meeting is available through our local cable access channels on Xfinity and Verizon FiOS and is a live stream on our website, www.tingsbrowma.gov. A recording of this meeting will be available through the video-on-demand portion of our website. Open meeting laws require that any member of the audience who intends on recording either video or audio, so declare that now. Seeing none, after instruction from the State Fire Marshal and the Tingsboro Fire Chief, in the event of an emergency, there is an exit directly across from me at the rear of the room and one to my left. With that, I ask all those who can to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to start with Board introductions, starting to my left.
Good evening, Jaclyn Schnackert, Executive Assistant.
How do you do, Jackie Gilfus?
Good evening, Ron Cohane.
Good evening, Colin Loizell, Town Manager.
Good evening, Catherine Foster, Assistant Town Manager.
Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion on meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair, a move that we review and approve the regular session meeting minutes for September 9th, 2024, and September 23rd, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? That carries 300.
Mr. Chair, a move that we review, approve, but not release the executive session meeting minutes for September the 9th, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Carries 300.
Mr. Chair, a move to review, but not release the executive session meeting minutes for September the 23rd, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
And I abstain since I was not in attendance.
That carries 201. All right. With that, we will open it up to citizen and business time for the citizens that are here who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda. I'll welcome you up to the microphone. You have, just to remind everybody of the rules, you have three minutes. Give us your name, your address, and then you can address the Board.
Good evening, Brian Farady, 3 Village Lane. I'd just like to sort of address, I appreciate the enthusiasm shown by this body, I believe, his last meeting about the possibility of a bus route to the Pheasant Lane Mall. Certainly, I feel like this has a great, could be a great use to the businesses in town, especially if it ends up running a bit later than the Saturday service that's seasonal. I know, I think the last one goes to the mall at like 5:00 PM, which certainly doesn't help anyone get to Epigram if they wanted to go like after work or something like that. And certainly, moving a bit further forward along in lines, I could see other bus routes with the LRTA being useful for town. Certainly, everyone here is used to the traffic across the bridge, so I'd imagine a bus route that goes possibly from the park and ride towards the center of Lowell could be useful. Totally not saying that just because I would live along such a bus route and could see myself using it. But certainly, I live with someone who commutes into Boston taking the train pretty frequently, and she's probably not the only one in town who could take advantage of that. And certainly, a bus route could be far quicker to come to town than whenever this train station's coming in Nashua. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Sir?
Jeff Bo, 33 Virginia Road. I'm here to address the letter that Mr. Snyder signs that was sent to President Biden regarding putting a welcome mat on Tingsboro for illegal migrants. I have concerns that he acted on his own fruition without the approval of the Board or, more importantly, the citizens of Tingsboro, and would like a little clarification on what the Board would be doing to have Tingsboro removed from the list of towns on that list, as well as ask for Mr. Snyder to step down from the Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else look to address the Board? Okay. We'll move on to public hearing for Tingsboro Sports Realty Trust, All Alcoholic On-Premise Restaurant Application, Common Vic Application, Weekday and Sunday Entertainment Application. Do you want to, do you want to start first and then we open the public hearing? Do you even want to?
Yeah, you can have Jackie give a quick introduction.
Go ahead, Jackie, and then we'll open up, if you give the background, then we'll open up the public.
Sure. Absolutely. So before the Board tonight is an application from Tingsboro Realty, Sports Realty Trust at 501 Potash Hill, Potash Hill Road in Tingsboro for a new on-premise Section 12 All Alcohol Beverages Restaurant License, a Common Vicure License, and a weekday and Sunday entertainment licenses. As some of you may recall, these applications relate to a modification of special permit to add an additional 7,000 square feet and 38 additional parking spaces at the Tingsboro Sports Center location approved. That was approved by the Board on October 2nd, 2023. The applicant is requesting entertainment in the form of televisions, jukebox, radios, stereos, and piped-in music. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 11:00 AM till 12:00 AM, Saturday, 7:00 AM to 12:00 AM, and Sunday, 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM. All applications are complete and the appropriate fees have been paid. Abutters were notified by the applicant via certified mail on September 13th, and the hearing was advertised in the Lowell Sun on September 23rd and September 30th. We requested comments from various departments with jurisdiction on this type of request, and there were no adverse comments. The Board of Health will require the applicant, when ready, to submit a plan review to obtain an occupancy permit signed by the Board of Health and other relevant departments. They then need to apply for a food permit, requiring at least Safe Serve and allergen awareness certifications and possibly an HACCP certification depending on the business type.
Thank you. Why don't we open up the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, a move the Select Board open the public hearing and waive the reading of the hearing notice and the legal ad.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? That carries 300. Public hearing is open. I'll leave it up to you to fill in any gaps and expand upon anything that might be there.
Mr. Chairman, pleasure to be here. Pete Nicosi, I'm the attorney for the applicant, Tingsboro Sports Realty Trust. Darrell Wickens, the principal of the organization, is here with me. Perhaps I should put Ms. Schnackert on my payroll to make presentations in the future because she basically said 90% of what's going on. So, I know you're all very well familiar with the business and the individual and family behind the business. Tingsboro Sports Center is one of our flagship businesses for this town for all its residents, provides a wide array of offerings, so much so that an expansion was necessary to keep up with the demand of the citizens of the town. This Board was gracious enough to approve that expansion. That expansion, if you have been over there recently, is well underway. The structure is effectively, the building envelope is effectively up, and they're moving full steam ahead to get that complete and operating space. To further enhance the strength of the business, and I know the Board of Selectment is committed to economic development in this town, they're looking to add a large-scale restaurant inside of the new addition to the property. We do provide some floor plans and some descriptions as to what that is. It will certainly be used by all of the customers of the business, most notably parents like us when our children come through there for various sporting events, as well as the adults that are in there for adult leagues, and it will also be a full-scale restaurant operation so that the neighborhood and the town residents can just take advantage of it on its own without having regard to having to be a patron for the sporting activities within the building. So, it's a nice addition to the area. It really is intended to just be a restaurant, and I think the entertainment offerings that we requested are emblematic of that, really just TV and music that you would see and hear in most restaurants. We did apply for the Common Vicure as well as the full liquor license and the entertainment licenses to have that. So, we're trying to get all that in place as we complete the infrastructure of the building and then move on to buying furniture, fixtures, and equipment that will go along with this restaurant. In terms of what the menu and the style of restaurant, it's going to be, I think, where the jury's still out on that right now. We are sort of reviewing multiple themes and options for that, so we're not prepared to flash a menu on the screen at this point, but it will be something, it will be something good, and we can certainly, you know, put the town on notice once some type of theme is chosen. So, this applicant obviously has, the family has interest in other licenses, has demonstrated good standing on all of those, has been no issues whatsoever. They certainly understand a license is a privilege and not a rights, and they are certainly accustomed to serving alcohol and understand tip certifications and all of the state and local regulations that go with that, and they have, they're a known commodity for this town. They've been operating that without incident. This is just further commitment to expanding a wonderful town business, and it really isn't more elaborate than that. So, we're welcome to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thanks. So, I will open it up to the Board first, and then we'll have some residents, are there initial questions that?
I don't have any questions. I think everything's been covered, has been covered.
I think it's less of a question for you and more of a logistical question about licenses. I know that Tingsboro Sports Club sometimes comes for like one-day licenses. Does that mean that if we grant this, then they would no longer need it? Like, does that supersede the need for one-day licenses that they've asked for in the past?
Jackie, I think we might have had some in the past, but I don't, I don't think there are any.
I'm not sure for typically if, well, definitely, if someone has a valid liquor license, they are not applicable. They cannot apply for a one-day liquor license. So, if Tingsboro Sports Centers had a liquor license for as long as I can remember, so they, they would not be applying for one-day liquor licenses, so that would be not applicable.
So, just a question for me. In particular, for the periods of time, you know, the Monday through Saturday later in the day, the music, jukeboxes, what is the intent?
Will not be able to hear that outside the building.
So, that's purely for inside the building? Because I know that there's?
Yeah, so the proposed restaurant, as you can see from the plan, is located down the far easterly end, and the only neighbor is down the hill, and that's myself. So, we're going to put up with maybe, maybe a little bit of noise, but there's no, it's shielded from the apartments, it's shielded from Maple Ridge, so it's, it couldn't be further away from any, any real neighbors. And I don't suspect there'll be any noise outside the building. It's self-contained inside, just like Buffalo Wild Wings or restaurants like that where Epagram, where you go in and you're inside a building.
Thank you. Yeah, well, I guess I'll open it up, are there any residents who would like to come up and ask some questions? Yes?
Could you speak louder? I could not hear anything he said.
Okay.
I can repeat that.
Yeah, if you could just repeat.
High points.
Yeah, so the high points of what Mr. Wickens said was, this is a self-contained restaurant. There is not going to be exterior restaurant and alcohol activities assigned with this restaurant, and the location in the building is the furthest away point from the sort of the more dense condominium residences that are on the other side of the building. The most affected abutter is actually Mr. Wickens himself, who lives in the primary residence on the opposite side of the property. So, that realistically is the only abutter. Other than that, you're not going to hear the restaurant activities outside the four walls of the establishment.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions? Other resident, yeah, if you'd like, if you can come up to the microphone, again, just state your name and address and ask your question. And to me, please.
Okay. Joan Pallidi, 42 Steinbeck Street. I live in Maple Ridge and very close to the parking lot that was just developed. So, one of my questions is, when the parking lot was approved, I was at that hearing, and it was said it was going to be used for an occasional large event. That's what the main purpose of the parking lot was. So, my question is, are the parking spaces that have been created going to be used for this restaurant? So, that's my first question. Because if it is, maybe they can answer, and then I'd have a follow-up.
Sure. I will, so, parking, can you describe the parking as it is today and then moving forward?
Sure. So, during that hearing, I don't think we said it would only be used for large events, just to clarify.
Yes, it was.
No. So, weekday business, I don't believe it will be open. I think we have sufficient parking for weekdays. Weekends is when our busy time is, and that parking lot will probably in use just about every weekend of the 21 weeks that we have our busy season, if you will. As far as parking at the restaurant, there is about 135 spots down at that end of the building now. We've added 135 spots down there, and the 128 that's up at the top of the hill, the auxiliary parking. I don't believe anybody that's going to the restaurant will have to park all the way up there and walk down.
Or even want to.
I can't say that that won't happen, can't happen, but I don't think that would be a realistic thing. There's, there's fairly ample parking down, abutting the restaurant, down in the back.
Thank you.
Okay. My second question is, the average restaurant in town, I'm not sure what time it closes, but I know when I try to go sometimes by nine o'clock, 9:30, they're shutting down. So, this is going to midnight?
Which is what are the other restaurants in town?
They do.
Some actually might are a little bit, we have some that are one o'clock, I believe.
A lot of times, restaurants apply, and Attorney Nicosi knows this, a lot of times restaurants will apply for longer hours than they intend to be open, because when the ABCC is involved, if you apply, let's say you assume you'll only be open till eight, that's what becomes a part of your license, and so to change that, they would have to apply again before both the Select Board and the ABCC. So, most of our restaurants, excluding outdoor service, we have a strict limit on outdoor service, but most of our restaurants, some even have until 2:00 AM, which is the maximum service hour in the Commonwealth, but you're right, many of them are not actually open that late. It's so they don't have to reapply if they want to change the hours on a special event.
Yeah, if they, or if they have the demand, you know, different days of the week, they're going to have different demand. So, you know, if a restaurant's slow, they can make the business decision to close early on a particular night, whereas if they're going to have a busy night, they have the option to take advantage of the maximum limits of the licenses offerings. So, our intent here is to, we looked at those hours as probably the ceiling for, you know, when an event would be maximized for us, but certainly, there is a chance that on select nights that we close earlier than that.
Okay. I guess, I don't, I'm not quite sure what divide, or I'm not quite sure what is the difference between a restaurant and a bar, because most restaurants, you're feeding food up to nine, 10 o'clock, but you're staying open to 12. To me, it seems more like a bar, and I don't know how that classification goes. And the only reason why I'm concerned is if the parking comes, starts coming our way, we will certainly hear noise on midnight. And in all honesty, I've been coming to hearings for years about that lot, and I understand Mr. Wickens has every right to be doing what he's doing, and it really has changed our lives. And now that we have a parking lot right next to us, I don't think there's much we can do. But we do have concerns that if there's going to be bar park, people that are using a bar at midnight at night, you know, in that parking lot, it will affect us even more with noise, because we can hear some things at the end of that Potash Hill already, and when kids are partying late at night, they use the end of the street. So, that's our concern. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Just, the reality is that, you know, most of our dense events, in terms of sporting events, are over before those late hours in the evening. So, the demand for parking is going to be way down at that point. So, you know, the lazy restaurant goer like myself is going to be looking for the closest proximity to the restaurant door, and I'm going to be parking down the back. So, that, that would be the first observation that I would make. There is a legal distinction between licenses under Master and Law, Chapter 138, with respect to restaurants and bars. So, there has to be food service available during, you know, the effect of hours for it to qualify as a restaurant. So, that's the distinction here. There will be food offerings at all times, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And, and just to be clear, maybe Colin and Jackie, the majority, so for example, at the 440, the licenses there and on Middlesex Road and all of those, those go at least until midnight or 1:00 AM, I think.
Correct.
Correct?
I think most are 2:00 AM, actually.
Most of the ones particularly granted before the last five years are strictly 2:00 AM. We still have some of those on the newer ones. Most commonly, it's 12 or 1:00 AM.
Okay.
And they don't stay open that late.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Could I request that Mr. Loizell show on the display? Could you go to Google Maps just so we could see the satellite?
And while we're doing that, is there anybody else who would like to come up and ask some questions? Yes, please.
Yes, I'm Shirley Birchfield, 17 Dickens Lane. I also live in Maple Ridge. And just first, to piggyback on some of the things Mrs. Pallidi said, that when that parking lot was presented, the business plan, which is in writing, said that the hours were until 9:00 PM. They never mentioned that they had the licenses until 1:00 in the morning. When I tried to bring that up, I was shut down by the Planning Board. And they did say that it would be, the purpose of it would be for occasional overflow parking for large events like tournaments on the weekend. Didn't say that it would be used all the time. And we do know that they are open well into midnight many times, because we can hear the cheers from, from the sports fields outside up until midnight and sometimes later in our development. But now, my, my real questions are, this is the addition to the original Sports Center. It was originally approved as one large building, and understandably so, Mr. Wickens wanted to do it in stages because it's a huge economic, financial undertaking. The Sports Center was given all of these licenses already. They've already been granted these licenses. Why do they need an additional, additional licenses for the other half of the building? It's all under the same roof.
Great question. So?
I think that's similar to my question.
I can, I mean, I can answer that. I mean, there are different.
Can you explain why you need different licenses?
Yeah. So, one is a wine and malt license for the exterior service, which we had granted, so there's limiting factors obviously there, and the licensed premises is the exterior area.
Can you speak up, just so that the folks?
One license is a wine and malt license only for the exterior food truck service, so that has limiting features on what that can be used for. The original grant of license, which is at technically a different legal address, it's 500 Potash Hill Road, not 501, they're separate legal addresses, was for the concession business operation that accompanies the activities in that particular building. This license is for a full-scale sit-down restaurant with food service to be in the new structure on the separately legally identified property address of 501. So, the limitations in what we can do with, with how the building was, was created for the snack bar area and food service concessions there versus what we are proposing here are completely different. We're proposing, how many seats? 100 and?
About 200 seats.
About 200 seats, you know, for people to have a sit-down restaurant. So, instead of, you know, parents, instead of parents, you know, meandering about, parents are able to go to a seated restaurant service. There are, there are many of these establishments all over the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I'll give you, for example, the Starland, used to be known as the University Sports Complex down in Hanover, Massachusetts, has a very similar situation where they have an upstairs space, which is a full-service restaurant and bar, so that parents don't have to just be on the sidelines during downtime between their kids' tournament games. They go in there and they have a full-scale meal, they can meet with, the kids come in for a full-scale meal, and there's a, there's a congregation area so that they have a place to go and pass the time in between these sporting events, and that's the same concept here. This is not some nightclub or a bar or, you know, some hangout place for everybody. It's, it's meant to be an ancillary offering to the patrons of, of this business, but it is going to be a public establishment so that, you know, area residents that might live over in the, you know, Steinbeck area, you might want to come over and have a meal and be able to walk home. So, I, I think it's a benefit to the area as well. With respect to the parking, the upper parking lot is being used as exactly as it was proposed, overflow for large events. And the large events typically are these tournament events, and those typically happen on the weekends. So, I do not believe that this restaurant is going to affect that, because we had 135 spots newly created down by the restaurant. People are going to logistically park there, and as the hours go on, the parking demand goes down, and the patrons will park closer to the restaurant. So, I think, as we've seen, you know, throughout the different maturation's of property development and construction, Mr. Wickens has tried to be, you know, a conscientious neighbor and to try to coexist as best we can, you know, because obviously, you have your interest in your residential properties, and he has his interest as a business owner. But I think, on the whole, you know, things have been run pretty well over there, and I think this restaurant will, you know, be a good addition.
So, just, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, on a side note as well, that parking lot, as we proposed in the Planning Board meeting, was, is going to be chained off during the week, and the lights will not come on at night for that parking lot. So, we shouldn't have anybody in there causing any issues or sitting there at night that are not patrons of the Sports Center. If, if it's the case where we have an event during, let's say, Columbus Day weekend or something, where it is on a weekday, that parking lot would be open. So, I don't want it to be understood that it will never be open Monday to Friday, but for the most, most of the time, as we said in the Planning Board meeting, that, that will be chained off, and there'll be nobody in there, and the lights will be out.
And, and to, to make sure that I'm paraphrasing, relative to the licenses, so it's a separate building, separate legal address, the state requires separate license for that at additional cost, correct? And we, and now, the existing malt?
Separately tax assessed, too.
Separately tax assessed as well. But the, the licenses, they remain, so this is going to be an additional, but this is an all-alcoholic license versus the ones that were there before.
And they're separate license holders. You have Tingsboro Sports Concessions, Inc., that holds the wine and malt. You have Tingsboro Sports Center, Inc., which holds the concession stand license, and this is the Tingsboro Sports Realty Trust, which is going to hold the all-alcoholic restaurant license. Three separate license holders, two separate, three separate license premises, so that's why they're able to coexist.
Did that answer your question?
Not completely.
Okay.
I think it was a lot of fast talk. But as far as the addresses go, I was under the impression, from reading things on the Registry of Deeds and other things that they have presented here at meetings, is that the address of 500 Potash Hill is Mass Crane. 501 is the Tingsboro Sports Center, and 499 is the parking lot. But now, you're saying that this one large building is no longer 501, it's 500 and 501? Then what is the address of Mass Crane?
It's an industrial condominium, is the way that the property is set up. They're separate units, yes.
So, there are four separate units now?
Between Mass Crane and the Tingsboro Sports Center property.
So, there are now four separate units with four separate addresses?
No. No, the Tingsboro Sports Concessions shares the same legal address as the Tingsboro Sports Center, but it's a different licensed premises because it's relegated to the exterior, whereas Tingsboro Sports Center, Inc. is an interior license. That's why, and they're two separate license holders, which also have separate ownership, so that's why they're able to coexist on the same premises.
So, the Tingsboro Sports Realty Trust, and I forget what you said the other license was under, they have different trustees on their two trusts? Are they the same trustees? Or they're the same trustees?
There's one trust. Tingsborough Sports Realty Trust.
Realty Trust.
Is a separate entity from Tingsborough Sports Center Incorporated, which is a corporation, which is different from Tingsborough Sports Concessions, Inc. And yes, there are different owners with, uh, and different percentages in those licenses.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay.
The bullbeak.
Okay. While, while we wait, I'm just going to have her go through this. You can step up here while she's doing that.
I'm just.
Questions?
Yeah. The, um, conversation about the parking lot predates my existence on the board. So I'm just looking at the, um, satellite. The parking lot that was recently created that we're talking about, is that in that area that looks like it's under construction, sort of to the right of the building?
Daryl pointed out.
Thank you.
So the upper parking lot is up here. This, this looks like it was done, uh, the building started to collapse, so this is probably made. So where this is carved out is the upper parking lot.
That was the auxiliary parking lot that, yeah, okay.
So the restaurant location is in that corner there.
Oh, yeah, I hope that no one would want to walk that. Okay, and so there's parking down there where the restaurant is?
So as you can see, there's new parking all the way down the side and there's two strips of parking there as well.
Thank you.
Mary Nason, 25 Dickens Lane. I just want to make sure that the restaurant is at the end of the Sports Center. Is that where it definitely is going? And is it built already?
No, so it's just the building envelope right now, but yes, it's down.
But it is at the end of the Sports Center?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. But it's not built, so when is it supposed to be built?
Well, they're, they're working on it. I mean, the building envelope is up, um, so it was, as soon as they can. When do you think, uh, occupancy is rolling in?
I would probably say, uh, next summer is probably the earliest it will happen.
Next summer for the folks.
Okay.
But again, this, this concept of multiple liquor licenses in the same general location is not like a novel idea. I mean, think of a casino. It's the same property address. You've got six different restaurants in a casino, all holding different liquor licenses. You know, it's not, you know, it's not a prohibition on its face. I mean, there are some legal requirements behind that, but, you know, malls, different, you know, there's all types of different business establishments that have those types of things.
Would you like to ask a question or make a comment?
No, I, I don't have any questions.
I didn't know whether there was any, any other folks from the public who would like to? Come on up.
Uh, my name is Madhuri Callahan. I'm at 19 Dickens Lane. And I didn't prepare to speak or anything like that, it's just, I think that you can't hear me? Oh, closer, sorry, thought I was sitting there. Anyway, um, is that okay?
Closer.
Jesus, okay.
It's almost unnaturally close.
It's unnaturally close, okay.
There you go.
Especially now. But anyway, my name is Madhuri Callahan, 19 Dickens Lane, um, in, in, in the Maple Ridge, um, complex here. And I think the reason that most of us in the complex, it seems like every time we come to the meeting, or it's everything, it's baby steps and more, not particularly, I'm not quite sure how the town works, but it's, it seems like baby steps is always more. In other words, authorization for the parking lot, um, you know, raping the forest, um, and then, you know, an extension to the building and then a liquor license for one building and another building. When is it going to be enough? That is my question. When is it going to be enough for that complex? I mean, I know they have to upgrade or things like that, but it's a lot, you know, it's a lot that's happened in the past few years. I've only been there 10 years. And we were told when we purchased the property, and I know you've probably heard this before, that it was conservation and there's no repercussion for that. So therefore, you can see how, why we would get upset. But I just really wonder, when is it going to be enough? There's a lot going on there in that, in that land, you know, changes, well, I don't know about the changes in numbers or things like that, but I'm not as close as other neighbors are to that new parking lot, um, fortunately, and I feel blessed for that. But it's, there are people who stay, who do come outside, outside the, the hall, um, the, after playing soccer or something like that. I mean, it's adult teams at night probably and stuff like that, what it sounds like. And, and that's not a frequent occurrence, but it happens, um, is that they're out, out there partying. And, just being guys, I guess, but it's, you know, that's concerning too, um, with, with offering the late hours that they can stay in, like you say, there's going to be food offerings with the alcohol. But sometimes, I don't know, it just seems like it keeps on going. So what's next, I guess? When is it ever going to be enough?
So, um, I guess I'll ask, do you have any plans for any future activities?
So I can tell you, we are out of land, so there's nothing going on unless we can go up and, and I don't think that's physically possible. I just saddled my kids with about 10.9 million in debt, so I don't think I'm doing anything more. They certainly don't want any more. So I think we're done.
Thank you. I think that, that is the multimillion dollar parking lot. It is done unbelievable. It has really been, I mean, it's been all summer, but it is, you know, we don't go, you can't go in there, it's locked off, but it's, it's, um, a lot of work and it's really, it was really done well. So I know that that was expensive as well as the other, so I am kind of glad to hear that, that this may be enough. Not that you're saddled with debt, but that you, but it's, um, but that you are, that...
Any good father should do that, I say.
Yeah, every good father should do that, absolutely. All right, I, thank you very much. I guess that's all I worry about is, is when is enough?
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I was also wondering sort of the vision five, 10 years out, and I think that's similar to, um, what the resident was asking. I wonder if, it sounds like.
You got it.
Good for right now. That's the vision, the vision was to get to this place with a restaurant.
Yes.
I mean, our plan when we were leasing progress was to expand here. That's why we bought 15 acres to have that plan. We got it approved back in 2017. So this wasn't anything just thought up or baby steps. It was planned, COVID stopped it for a couple, three years. Luckily, we didn't start it before COVID, but, um, so now, now was the time. But, so.
So they had a balancing act with demand from transitioning from the other facility over to this one and then working its way into the demand of the new structure. So this was, the phase was always planned.
And do you feel like this has lived into your dream?
I know I should have done it back then when all the prices were half of what they are now. I was not a visionary then.
And, and I do think it's important for people to understand that the reality is, you know, our zoning bylaws dictate what we can and can't do. It's not like these are a thing, we're not, we're not giving variances here, we're not doing any of that, that's a, that's a separate entity. We're, we're here dealing with the, the food and liquor licenses relative to that and, and that's why the, the scope of what, you know, we control and same thing to sit there and say, it, it's not like we can put stipulations, say, oh, can't build anything else there. Ultimately, that's determined by our zoning bylaws and, and working within planning and zoning board of appeals.
I, I understand their, their concerns. As you said, unfortunately, the way it's set up is an I-1 zone next to a residential, which is not a, a very attractive mix. We certainly try, we can't control folks that go out, out of the building at night, but we certainly, I know my son, who works, both sons work at night, they will go out and tell them to leave. And if they don't leave, we call the police. You, you probably, if you look through the police report, there's been calls from us to come down and clear the lot out. So we're, we're, we try to be sympathetic to their plight and not have folks in the parking lot at 11:00, 11:30 at night. That's not always the case because they'll park down kind of in the corners and we don't see them, but for the most part, or up in the circle. But for the most part, we try to, uh, be sympathetic to the, uh, time of night and the noise piece. Unfortunately, people are not sympathetic to that. Very selfish. I, you know, I woke up at noon, I have a service job, so at midnight is playtime for me. It's not sleep, right?
Thank you. Sir?
Bruce Birchfield, 17 Dickens Lane. Daryl, um, I, I know I'm supposed to admit you, but it's, it's Daryl's comment from a while back, um, talking about the upper parking lot and the Monday through Friday chaining off it. One of the things that you had offered or had discussed was a camera just to watch the, the kiln to keep it from being vandalized. But the other thing was the motion sensor lights in the parking lot in case somebody did go into the parking lot during the week? On a weekday, weeknight when it's supposed to be chained off, if they drop the chain and start, and people start just hanging out up there, is there any way to have those lights on, a motion sensor? I think you had talked about that a while back. Just to discourage, you know, weekly use or weekday use of that parking lot. Because you can't see it from the building, for one thing, for your, your son's sake, you know, they, unless they actually go up there, they have no idea the chain's been dropped. That's all, thanks.
So we certainly plan to have cameras. The motion detector lights, we talked to the electricians about that. The, uh, the downside of those is if you have a blustery night where you have leaves blowing, they're, they're going on, yeah, squirrel runs by, they're going on and off. It would probably be more problematic than it's worth having none. I, I know Mass Crane's lights are typically on all night and that will give some, some light to, to that area.
Thank you. Yes?
Me again, Shirley Birchfield, 17 Dickens. And I was just triggered by a comment that Mr. Wickens just made about they have no more land to work with. Well, when he first started with Mass Crane and the Sports Center, they left this four-acre parcel, which they called Phase Three, and they tried to sell it. They couldn't sell it, they took it back off the market and one half of it is what has become the parking lot. When the question came up, why are you doing the parking lot at the far end rather than the end closer to you? We were told by the town planner that they wanted to reserve that other half to sell, to put a building on. And I know it was originally, um, being sold as a place where somebody could put a small office building with a parking lot there. So I think he still does have more, more land and more, more to do. He may not be building it himself, but I feel that he's probably going to sell it to let somebody else, uh, put something on it because he's got a $10 million loan to pay off.
And, and I'll let you...
Well, the conspiracy theory is out. I'm sorry, I, I've been uncovered.
Good.
So first of all, if you, if you did your homework, that 4.2 acres is owned 60% by me and 40% by George Frost from Mass Crane. So I don't own that center section, so I can't do anything with it. What George does with it is up to him. So George owns that section that has been, still has the trees on it. We decided to leave the trees on it. George wanted me to cut them down while the tree cutter was there. And in, uh, you know, for you folks, I don't think you wanted the whole set of trees taken down. We left them there. We put up a very nice fence. I didn't have to, I didn't have to put up the fence. The town, the planning board only required trees. I put up the fence because I knew that was going to be problematic to have just trees there.
The trees will be going up soon?
They're coming Thursday. I think we can get them planted Friday.
Excellent, thank you.
They're only this big, so it's going to take a while for them to do any good.
That's fine. By spring, they should be nice trees.
And as we agreed, we pushed the fence back and the plants are going to go on your side.
Right.
So you can see the rhododendrons and stuff, not on my side. So we tried to work with you, Shirley. I don't, I don't know what to say.
We do, we do appreciate what you have done, Daryl.
I don't have any more land, I can tell you, nothing in my pockets, nothing up the sleeve. There is no more property there that can be built on unless I tore my house down and built something down there, and I think my wife would have a problem with that.
It's just that I always have, I've had an issue in the 10 years or so that we've been dealing with this, that a statement is made that you look behind it, there's a little bit more going on. And I can see Daryl saying that, no, he's not going to do any more building and that's probably correct. He can't. But that doesn't mean there's not more building going to be going on there. So we just want to be aware that you're probably not done seeing us.
Yeah, this, this...
We're also a little bit outside the application.
Yeah, so...
So these, these are planning board considerations that were all forwarded out at the time that we had permitting for that parking lot. We're here for a liquor license, a food service license and for an entertainment license. So I think, I, we've, we've tried to indulge all of the comments and also respond to them on their merits to continue to show that this business person is a good neighbor and has been a good neighbor and tried to do what he can reasonably to balance the concerns of an abutting residential development to an industrial parcel. We also have our own rights to develop our parcel and, and seek to be profitable, which you have to balance your interests against. So we have to coexist together and I think Daryl has shown time and time again throughout all of these public hearings as we've had these dialogues, that he really has tried to minimize the concerns and tried to, you know, meet the reasonable requests of the neighborhood. But I think we're at a point now where the existing conditions that you see out there is, is, is basically what's going to exist for the long term. And we're talking about adding a nice restaurant inside a building that will, should have, you know, minimal to zero impact on the site itself. Uh, because the infrastructure improvements that we've made with the expansion are going to accommodate it. So I understand that, you know, people, uh, don't like the status quo disturbed. I, you know, I handle permitting hearings and all over the place and have done so for 30 years. So I, I get it. But I, I think here we've struck a, we've struck a good balance.
So, um, again, I'll reiterate, so again, this is for the liquor license and the food license. The planning board, there may be other things that come before the planning board and, and I would encourage you to go to those, in those types of situations, uh, because... Those are the things and, and they're following our zoning laws. So if there are items, I, I'll let, if somebody else would like to, to speak, cover some new ground, again, relative to the liquor license and, and the, and, and the, uh, restaurant, um, request.
I do appreciate, just want to close by saying, I do appreciate the things that Daryl has been doing. He's been, he was working well with us with the, um, parking lot, gave in some things that he really didn't have to do. But just because of past history of sentences being twisted a little, I take what he says tonight about the liquor license with a grain of salt, so it'll just be, you may be back.
We, we hope that all of these residents are patrons of the restaurant.
Well, I can't because I've been told to be arrested if I show up on the property.
Okay, so, yes, a- again, we covering new ground? Please.
Some new ground. I have one question about the shrubs he just said were this high.
Okay, it hasn't, it, that's not pertinent to what we're talking about here.
We were told they were going to be eight feet high. Diane Murphy, 45 Steinbeck Street. I appreciate everything Daryl has worked very well with. Anything I've asked him about or whatever, he's been very helpful. My biggest concern, because I am right next to that fence and the parking lot, um, is the noise level that may or may not happen. I hear it now with just people coming and going from the Sports Center. And sometimes it's 12:30, 1:00 in the morning and I know they don't have any control over people's mufflers or their radios, you know, vibrating as they go through or up the street, but, um, that's a big concern for me. That, they wake me up in the middle of the night many times. So, um, I just hope that maybe a sign or something could be put on their property for these people to, please just turn your radio off till you get to Westford Road. That would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else covering new ground? All right, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I move the select board, close the public hearing.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstand? Carries 300. I'll open up to the board for questions, comments as part of deliberation.
I think I've asked everything I could possibly think of.
I think everything's been asked that I can think of myself.
Okay, um, well, I...
Grateful for the residents that were engaged. I, I just, I do really want to thank everyone for attending. I, I don't know if this is, am I allowed to address them? Uh, thank you.
I give you latitude, come on.
Um, I think it's really important that you're engaged and, you know, you're listening to what's happening in the town around you. It takes a lot to... It takes a lot to go out of your way to show up and be a part of this conversation. So, yeah, just really grateful. I think this certainly helped me think about, you know, this decision and took a lot of things into consideration. So, yeah, I feel ready.
Yeah, and I think it's important that as multiple people had stated that Mr. Wickens works with the residents, it's not perfect. It's difficult. You know, I took a note here and we're looking at industrial next to residential, being on the zoning review committee. I look at it and say, hmm, do we maybe have to relook at some of our zoning to prevent those types of situations? So I look at it and say, I get it. It might be that we just put people in a difficult situation and we in the town need to look at some opportunities to maybe do some things a little bit differently. We have, do you wanna look at mine for any motions?
Keep going.
Okay. So I guess with that, and if we don't have any other questions relative to the application, I will entertain.
Can I see your computer?
You wanna see mine?
I'm having computer problems.
We have new computers just-
The Chair.
Go ahead.
I move that the select board approve the all alcoholic beverages, common vicular and weekday and Sunday entertainment licenses as presented for Tingsborough Sports Realty Trust at 501 Potash Hill Road, Tingsborough.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? That carries three zero zero.
Appreciate your time.
For coming in, thank you folks.
Thank you, everybody.
And when we do start looking at those zoning, we'd like to hear from you folks.
Have a good night.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing, tax classification, hearing with the Board of Assessors. This is actually one of my favorite presentations of the year.
It's so weird that everyone doesn't wanna stay for the tax assessor.
Do we have enough chairs for the assessors? Oh, need more? Good? All right, who's driving the presentation?
I will do that, but our chief assessor is here.
Yeah, why don't we, before the present, do you wanna do the presentation then? Open the public hearing? You know, while you're getting settled, let's open the public hearing.
Chair, I move the select board, open the public hearing and waive the reading of the hearing notice and we go ahead.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries three zero zero. Public hearing is open.
It's because I didn't put that chocolate on top.
I was trying to give you a chance.
No, okay.
All right, and with your permission, I will
Please.
reconvene, I'll make a, have a motion to reconvene our meeting that we previously suspended before this meeting.
I have a motion to reconvene our meeting.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, George. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? That does carry three zero zero. So, good evening.
Yes, good evening. All right, so we're here to present to you our annual information for our tax classification hearing. The purpose of the hearing is required by Mass General Law to present options to the select board to decide whether or not they wish to shift the property tax burden amongst the different classes of property. A shift in the tax rate does not increase the tax, to the total tax levy. It will just determine the share that is paid amongst the different classes of property. And the assessors are required under Mass General Law to review property values on an annual basis and assess property at its fair and market value. The Division of Local Services reviews our property assessments each year, but every fifth year we go through a recertification. And FY25 is one of our certification years. So the FY25 property assessments for our single family and condo properties, we are looking at calendar year 2023 sales. There's an abundance of sales in those categories, so we use one year in our analysis. For all other residential property in the commercial and industrial classes, we have analyzed a two-year period and had 17 sales as part of that analysis. The next slide analyzes the total valuation for FY25. So the total town valuation has increased 7% from last year. So we're approaching like 2.8 billion in value. Our certified new growth valuation is approaching 36 million in value, up 17% from last year. So that equates to an increased tax levy of $456,387, which is up 5% from last year. And the new growth comes from all new construction, condo development, people who put on additions, finish basements, renovate bathrooms, et cetera. And the average single-family home now in town has increased 5% and it is now at 613,800. The next slide shows the change in the total town value over the last five years. Interesting to point out, I did the change from FY21 to FY25 and we've seen a 50% increase in value in that 50, that five-year period. So things, as we know in the world, values are definitely increasing. Then looking at the new growth. So as I mentioned, the new growth comes from anything that we haven't taxed before. Again, the little graph on the left-hand side will show where the growth is coming from. So primarily, our growth comes from the residential sector. And the top projects from our residential sector were new houses. We just have them being built sporadically in town. I think the last subdivision is Crown Road. I think there's one house left to be completed over there. But then the real big contributor to the residential growth has been the Enclave 55-plus condominium complex. And for the commercial, industrial, and personal property projects, we've had the Epigram Brewery, the Washville Car Wash, the addition in renovations at the Sports Center, Westford Road Plaza, so the renovation there and the tenants of Domino's and Hut Works Fulltane Road. We have industrial condominiums that have been constructed over there. And this year, our new growth in the personal property for new accounts was significant, like about 1.5 million. And that's because we hadn't picked them up last year. So we sort of have two years' worth of growth within that personal property. So then if we take a look at the average property value history, these are just some visuals so you can see, as we know, things are on the increase. And again, looking over the five-year period, the residential property value has increased 48% since fiscal year 21. And the commercial value has increased 27% over that last five-year period. And then looking at the average tax bill history, so again, I'm just using the five-year period. And residential tax bill has increased 16% from 21 to 25. And you can see the commercial sector hasn't varied as much and I think that is due primarily to the fluctuation in the value hasn't been as drastic with the commercial industrial sector as it has been in the residential area. So as we get to talk about the property classification here, so the values by property type. So you can see in the graph there, the residential takes up 88%, comprises 88% of our real estate base. So the other 12% is our commercial, industrial, and all personal property businesses. So Tingsborough is primarily a residential community. So out of the town's 2.8 billion in value, the residential sector comprises nearly 2.5 billion in value. So we like to reiterate in that point that if we shift the tax rate, we would only be providing a minimal savings to our residential taxpayers while putting an undue burden on our commercial and industrial taxpayers in town. So this slide here just represents the calculation of what our tax rate would be. So we take our total tax levy, multiply that by 1,000 and we divide that by our total town value. So our tax rate estimated for these purposes is coming to 1229 for this year. So FY24, we're at 1272. So that would see the rate coming down. That may change once we get through the approval process with the state, but it should be pretty close. And the next slide is looking at the tax rate over the last five years. So as you see, typically, as the evaluations are on the increase, the tax rate is on the decrease. So back in FY21, our tax rate was 1607 and today we're proposing a rate of 1229. Okay, so getting into shifting the tax burden. As I mentioned before, Tingsborough is primarily a residential community and historically, Tingsborough has always maintained a residential factor of one. And splitting the rate doesn't increase tax revenue, it's just shifting the burden amongst the different classes of property. Tingsborough's revenue comes from 88% of residential property. And if we maintain a factor of one, we're supporting economic development and agriculture in town. And out of the communities in the Commonwealth, there are 122 cities and towns that had a split rate last year. And to reiterate further what the impact would be to the commercial class, this chart sort of speaks for itself. So if we look at the save 10%, if we were to shift the rate by 10%, the residential homeowner would save about $98, but we would be increasing the commercial industrial taxpayer about $800 annually. And then doing the max shift to the 50%, you know, a residential taxpayer would save $500, but the commercial industrial taxpayer would be paying close to another $4,000 annually. Doesn't make a lot of sense. One of the other options that the board has is to apply these other exemptions or discounts. The open space discount is for land maintained and it's open in natural state. And it's not subject to conservation restriction, held for production of income or taxable under the chapter land programs, which is forestry, agriculture, horticulture, and recreation. The open space discount has a maximum discount of 25%. We have no parcels in Tingsborough classified under open space. And last year, we had 42 parcels participating in the chapter land programs, which do provide a better benefit than the open space provision would. There are 19 communities in the Commonwealth that do classify open space, but just one of them offers the discount. Then we have the residential exemption. A residential exemption can provide a reduction of 35% and it's in a shift within the residential class. And so what this does is it shifts the value from lower-valued properties that are domiciled or held in domicile by Tingsborough residents to higher-valued properties that are non-domiciliary owned. So typically, the communities that adopt a residential exemption are communities that have high rental property or second homes. So we don't have that type of housing stock here in town. We're primarily, you know, residential-owned. And there are 18 towns that have allowed a residential exemption in the Commonwealth. And the small commercial exemption, the select board can choose an exemption of up to 10% and now this shifts the burden within the commercial class. And so it must be strictly for commercial property owned by, the property owned by businesses with 10 employees or less and the property value must be less than a million dollars. It's an annual application process. Again, we don't have significant commercial property, I think, to entertain this. And there are just 14 communities that offer this exemption as well. So based on the information that we have presented and the board voted earlier at their meeting that they recommend that the select board not adopt a split tax rate, not adopt an open space discount, and not adopt the residential exemption, and not adopt the small commercial exemption. So do any of you have questions?
I'll open it up to the board for questions. Select person, Bill Fiss, would you like to start?
I would not like to start.
Okay.
I'll start. You know, like it was stated, you know, that this board has to work very closely with the state to go through this. They need to present this once a year and the state verifies this moving forward. And every year, you guys, from what I know, everything seems to be, come out exactly with the way you present it and they approve it without, without an issue. You know, as relates to the tax rates, I appreciate the residential exemption because I didn't know what that was when I read through this and now I do. And like you said, we don't have a high rental or second home type of environment, so that really wouldn't make any sense. You know, as it relates to commercial versus the residential, you know, as you presented, it is the same tax rate. But what the residents do also need to know, as you just heard at the prior, the Sports Center talked about, there's a lot of other licenses, a lot of other taxes that they have to pay. You know, if they have, you know, different machines, they have to pay for that. They have to pay for their licensing and vicular license. There's a lot of other fees that they still do have to pay. So they do still pay, you know, more. You know, and as relates to keeping the single tax rate, I couldn't agree with you more. When I've gone to the state Mass Municipal Association, they say when you start thinking about splitting, as we start getting close to 20% commercial, which, and as you presented, we're not even close to that. So, you know, we, you know, everybody, I talked to so many people who say, we wanna increase our commercial. We wanna increase the amount of commercial, but we're not gonna do that if we increase the rate, you know. So, you know, I totally agree with everything you said and thank you for the presentation as always. It was very informative and I also do look forward to this presentation every year.
Now, would you like to go?
Sure. This is my first time receiving this presentation, so thank you. I will be totally transparent. This is not an area of knowledge for me. I am learning about taxes as we go. Every time something comes up, it's like, it's, I find it very complicated. So I am grateful that you are here to do this work and you can be the subject matter experts. I mean, hearing the presentation, I think, understanding that if you shift the rate away from residents, which I'm sure all of us would love to do, there is a very significant impact to commercial business. And we want to be able to support economic development. That's something that's really important to us. So I think everything you presented, at least based on my understanding of how taxes work, seems like the right thing. So, thank you.
Okay. I have a question and Colin, you might need to weigh in. So the tax rate is based on what we have now. To give people an idea, do we know what $2 million in debt, because debt exclusion, it's not part of this, but what is, do we know what $2 million bucks a year would be from a tax rate standpoint? I just wanna, because I, I think I know the answer on this, but because I-
I don't have it-
I don't need it to the penny. I'm just thinking like, because here's my, here's my theory. I believe that even when you factor in the additional debt that will be there, the tax rate is still gonna be less than what it was in 2021, which was $16.
Absolutely, most certainly.
So, that was, that was where I was going. We can go through and give people what the numbers are. That'll probably be part of another discussion and I know that you guys don't have to worry about that. It's just, it's a factor in there. But our tax rate has been going down. A big chunk of that is not because we're spending less, it's because our homes are valued more. Got it? So your tax bill is not going down, just going through by tax rate. Everybody says, oh, we have a high tax rate. We have a low tax rate. We might have taxes that people feel are high and I get it because we all sit there and go, every time you write that check, or you do it electronically, whatever it is, you sit there and go, oh, this is painful. We all do it. But I think it's, it's one of those things where I think we're, I know that we're making the right decisions. I have a family home in Wellfleet where they have that different rate. And it's painful for the people that don't live there year-round. They get hammered and you don't get to vote on anything. I don't think that's the right way to go. I don't think it's, it's not really material for us. I think not having a split rate, I think is, we're starting to make some improvements on the commercial side. I think not having a split rate, I think is, we're starting to make some improvements on the commercial side, and I think we've got, you know, still some ways to go in there, because I'd really love to see us not have eighty-eight percent be of the burden being purely on residents. And the only way we do that is by bringing in some more commercial. Good, we've got to work on where we put them and make sure that they're in the right spots and they're the right things, but I think we're heading in the right direction. Personally, I think that you are totally on board, and I totally agree with not having a split tax rate, not having the open space discount, not having a residential exemption, and not having the small commercial exemption, which is basically what we've been doing. So.
We're all in agreement.
I think we're all in agreement, and I think as such, I need to do, is there four motions? Do we have to do them separately or all as one? What does the state require?
I have them in front of me. There are four, yes.
Then go for it. Oh, we got to close it.
Have we closed the public hearing?
No, and actually, did anybody in the public come up to speak? Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Getting ahead of myself. Come on, I get so excited when we started talking about taxes.
Oh, yeah, so does everybody else.
Bruce Birchfield, Seventeen Dickens Lane. So our development, and so this is for the committee, because I want to just food for thought or something to think about. Some of the houses, especially our development, has seventy-two individual homes. And we have no town services because of the way the development went up. I totally understand that. But there's no way to get a rebate or relaxation on the tax burden, even though you don't get snow plowing, you don't have trash pickup, you don't have street services, facility services. Anything under the ground is our own responsibility. And so there's, there's no representation. You're taxed, you're getting taxed without representation from, from the town. And the town won't listen to it. So what I'm asking is, is a committee like this able to address things like that, where you've got developments going up that don't have town services, but they're paying the full tax burden? And then ours is a fifty-five-plus community, so we don't have kids going to school either. So there's that portion, so there's, there's multiple things that we're paying for that we're not reaping any benefits from at all. And there's no way to get any relief from that.
So I don't believe it's part of this, but it would be something that would have to go in front of the town. It's not like, even we can't just sit there and say, hey, you know, don't worry about it.
So to be honest, we went to a town meeting, and we tried to get relief from that, and that town literally shouted us down. Literally.
Yeah, go ahead, Colin. Just, just two things, and the assessors can certainly correct if I'm wrong. I'm not even sure if that's something a municipality can opt to do. Can a municipality set a separate tax rate?
No, from what I understand, I mean, and what Mr. Birchfield says is correct, how that complex and how these other ones are approved is, that's the stipulation. The town is not going to provide those services. It's my understanding, something like that would need a home rule petition.
To the legislature.
So it would be even more than that. It's more than just going to town meeting and getting it. We'd have to do a full home rule petition that would have to go in front of town meeting, two-thirds.
What I will say is home rule petitions relative, certainly not addressing this particular issue, which does come up from time to time. There is currently a home rule petition from the city of Boston addressing not this issue, but looking to change the way they tax residential properties. Seeing how that, there's been virtually no movement on the legislature, this is a priority, I think, of the mayor. Seeing how the legislature reacts to that may be a bellwether of how they would react to a similar home rule petition. That's the only one I'm familiar with that would change substantially how you tax. But Tingsborough taxes under the statutes provided by the state law, and to Lauren's point, if we were to create a new category of taxes, it would have to be done ultimately by the legislature, whether that's through a home rule petition that town meeting supported, or if the legislature somehow decided to do it on their own.
I just feel if the town wants to be equitable, they need to rethink these developments, how they're taxing, what they're taxing for. And be honest, I mean, you just, individual homeowners move into these places, have no clue. It's, it's all in the fine print, and it's forty pages down someplace where it's going to tell you, you're getting taxed, but you're not getting the services you're being taxed for.
I would, I would think that people would want to, when you move into a community, same thing, you're going to want to know if you have HOA fees and all that. You're going to want to know what, what you're getting into.
Yeah, and I don't think it's clearly spelled out, and I don't think it's equitable the way it's being handled, so my comment.
Thank you. Do you want to say something before? Okay.
Yeah, Shirley Birchfield, Seventeen Dickens. I could just put a little bit of a different perspective on what my husband has said. That, yeah, people are supposed to be getting all those documents when they purchase a house, and they should know what the taxes are going to be if they've done their homework. However, when we purchased in the development, it wasn't finished yet, we were like, we'd be halfway through. The developer told us, and this could have just been a sales pitch, that the assessor told him at the time, and it was not Ms. Winkle, I think it was maybe before assessors before her, that he had been told that they could possibly tax us on a reduced assessment, like an eighty percent assessment, as opposed to the hundred percent that all of the other communities are doing. Is that something that can be done here without having to go to legislature?
So, yeah, so.
Yeah, no.
The assessments have to be at a hundred percent.
Full market value.
Full market value, which is something that's really changed a lot in the last several years, because people weren't necessarily doing the assessments.
And again, we look at, we look at fair market value, and so we would be analyze properties that are selling in your development. So if, if the sales started going down in that development because people are like, we're paying for this, and we're not getting these services, then the market would indicate to us that we need to adjust the value. So that's not what the market's saying. So we, we can't adjust it. I mean, and to go forward with that, I think you do need to do some kind of home rule petition or get some motion going, because how the development and others have been approved, those services.
Because you've got, you've got a lot more developments that follow into that now. It's all money into the town pockets and out of ours, while we get nothing. And our, our development's getting older, and the pipes are breaking, and we have to have those fixed on our own. The town has nothing to do with any of that. So it is getting more expensive for us, and our fees are going up because we're paying that. We started at eight, one eighty-five for monthly maintenance fees, HOA fees, and we're now up to three seventy-seven. So, and it's going to go up more.
Yep.
But, okay, so I will have to look up how to do a home rule petition and go with that.
And I think that, yeah, and I think that gets to be more complicated too, because then you're going to have people who own single-family homes, and I don't have children. You know, I'm not, I'm paying part of the, the school debt. And, but you've had kids that have gone through the school system. Some people do not, you know, and then they're going to want an adjustment, because I'm not paying, you know, I don't have children, I'm not paying them, I go to private school, you know, so.
I actually don't mind paying the fees for the schools, because I know that's the future of our town.
Right.
So I have no problem with that. It's paying for my snow plowing and paying for your snow plowing separately. And your trash pickup, and your recycling pickup, and all of that, I'm paying twice for it. So that's what I object to.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, let's close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, move to the select board, close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Carries three zero zero.
Could I just make a quick comment?
Please.
Just for the clarification for our newest select person, and also for those people at home. What the selectmen are doing tonight are simply voting on whether to split or not split the tax rate. Some citizens are under the impression that this meeting is to set the tax rate for the town. This is incorrect. We, the town, the selectmen do not set the tax rate. In fact, this, the tax rate that we have proposed at the moment are, is to our best ability to guess sort of what the tax rate is going to be. But until all the papers are filed with the Department of Revenue and things, there is no guarantee that this will be the tax rate. Usually, we come out within a few cents of this, but I don't want people to, who might be at home listening to this, say, oh, our tax rate's going to be twelve twenty-nine, and the selectmen voted for that. That is not the case, so I just want to clarify that for people who might not understand how the process works.
Thank you for that. Thank you, appreciate that. And I do still want to, I do want to, at some point, have a, a video where we walk through, where people can take a look at their tax bill and show them, this is where it is, because there's a lot of common sense that's in there, but a lot of folks don't understand the basics of what those things are. I'd love to work with you folks on that and media department to do that. So with that, I'm going to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
Thank you. I move that we, the select board, vote to select a minimum residential factor of one for fiscal year twenty twenty-five tax classification purposes, maintaining a single rate for all classes of property.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Carries three zero zero.
Mr. Chair, I move that no open space discount be adopted for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Carries three zero zero.
Mr. Chair, I move the residential exemption not be adopted for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Carries three zero zero.
Mr. Chair, I move that the small commercial exemption not be adopted for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Carries three zero zero. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thanks for all the hard work, as always.
Always informative.
Yes, with your permission, we will entertain a motion to close our meeting of our board.
I make a motion.
Thank you, Marie. Thank you, George. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You can kick me down. No, 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 um, hang on, hold that thought. No, I'm just, can we have the presentation piece? You know how they carve out your town managers?
Yes, we carve that out separately.
Can you carve that out too and put that on there? Because I think that was good. Explains everything to people, hopefully they understand a little bit better that way.
Thank you.
Excellent, all right. Could I, could we do the Epigram one?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, we're going to go to, we're going to bounce around a little, we're going to go to seven B. Is that okay, Jackie?
That works for me.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I know this is going to be yours, so.
Okay, yes.
Hi. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for having me.
Including your packet, this evening is a request for modification of hours for Section twelve on premises, all alcohol beverages licensed and common viculars licensed from Daniel Lyons of Epigram Brew Company, located at three ninety-four Middlesex Road, Tingsborough. The applicant is seeking to modify their current hours of operation from Wednesday through Friday, eleven AM to eleven PM, and Saturday, eleven AM to eleven PM, and Sunday, eleven AM to ten PM, to Monday through Saturday, eight AM to two AM, and Sunday, ten AM to two AM. Those are the maximum state allowed hours. The patio hours will be from eight AM to ten PM on Monday through Saturday, and Sunday, ten AM to nine PM, as per select board policy. The ABCC does not require butter notification or legal advertisement or requests for extension hours. It should be noted, this request does not change the entertainment license issued by this board. The applicant has been advised, they, should they wish to change the entertainment licenses, they would need to file an application with this board, which would require legal notice and a butter's notification and a hearing.
Anything that you'd like to add?
Uh, no, started as, we're looking to offer brunch Saturday, Sunday mornings. We currently don't open, we're not, I mean, we don't plan on being open till two in the morning. I mean, we've been approached for things like weddings and stuff like that, we haven't done any yet, but like, in the event that we had something like that, we'd be able to do so with changing to the max hours, just so we don't have to come back here and get, you know, re-approved. But right now, the only thing, the, the main reason for this is like, you know, Saturday, Sunday brunch, and maybe like, you know, Sunday night football, if the game's not over till eleven, we still open a little later or something like that.
Perfect, open up to the board for questions. Select person Gilfis, would you like to start?
I can start this time.
Okay.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have to say, I'm really glad that we had that very long discussion about the sports club, because when I, I'm going to be honest, when I read this, I was like, there's no way I'm voting in favor for this.
Oh, good.
Because I was really concerned about it being open until two AM.
Yeah.
And now that I understand that really, like, for the sake of the license, it makes sense to have it be longer than you intend, this does not mean that you're going to be open these hours. In fact, the previous hours, it's Wednesday to Friday, eleven to eleven, and you're obviously extending Monday, you know, seven days a week.
Yeah.
Do you intend to change the days?
The latest we're open is ten PM.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I, I think I feel much more comfortable knowing that, so.
Thank you.
Excellent. I have no questions.
Excellent, thank you.
I have a question, what about the outside serving? Is it not applicable to any of these hours? That, that was a separate timeline?
Correct.
Okay, we, I couldn't remember whether it was just, we allowed them to do it, but those were specific times, which are not changing. Those are just Wednesdays, right? I think, was that Wednesday? Or was that every day?
It's entertainment, you are changing.
You're, you're, you're only doing it on Wednesdays, but we did it, we extended that.
You are changing the patio hours. They're going to be open at eight when the, when the facility opens, so they're going to be allowed to open at eight.
Yep.
And they will go until ten on Monday through Saturday, which is the maximum the board allows per their policy.
Yep.
And on Sunday, they have to be off the patio at nine o'clock, per your policy.
That's correct, okay. And we, if, there's no residence in that area?
No.
Okay. Don't want to say that I've, I've been there, but I've been there many times.
Appreciate it. Love to see you guys down there.
Um, so with that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the select board approve the modification for Epigram Brew Company at three ninety-four Middlesex Road to expand the hours of the on-premise all alcoholic beverages and common vicular licenses to Monday through Saturday, eight AM to two AM, and Sunday, ten AM to two AM. And the patio hours to eight AM to ten PM on Monday, Saturday, and Sunday, ten AM to nine PM, as per select board policy as presented.
Monday through Saturday, just one.
Monday.
Through Saturday.
Through Saturday and Sunday.
Sunday, ten through.
Ten AM to nine PM.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
Who does set expectations around how late places are open?
I'm not sure I follow, you mean?
Like, outside of this conversation about liquor license, is everything handled on an individual basis?
Like for restaurants, how late are they open?
Yes, I'm just thinking like, the reason that I initially was concerned about this is, when I think about like bars being open in Boston until two AM, like I imagine that people can leave the bar, get on the train, and go home. Whereas obviously, Epigram is quite a different experience. You're going to be driving, barring our shuttle service, which we also talked about. So, right, that's a different thing.
Great idea.
Great idea, love it. So just thinking about like, we as a town being concerned about people, if this scenario were that they were open until two AM and that became a precedent, and there aren't residents right next to them, but other restaurants that do have licenses until two AM, like, who, is that zoning? Is it planning? Is it us? Does it just come down to the liquor license?
May I take this one, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Yes, it depends on the type of business as well. I won't go into long diatribe, but for instance, if you're talking about an office park, nobody has control over that. If you're talking about a restaurant, the select board would through the common vic license. If you're talking about a restaurant with the bar, you would as well through the common vic license and the liquor license. Gas stations, unless they're serving food, you'd have no control. It would have to be a licensable activity, in which case the license granting authority, which nine out of ten times is you, would set that standard. I think that answers it generally.
Yeah, and I think it's important, I understand, I think I understand where you're going.
I'm just thinking more like visioning, like, you know, what does the town want of, in terms of noise and excitement after hours?
I don't think you want a ton of it.
Yeah.
Hang on, I'll let you, I'll let you speak, let me give you my thing. But I think for, relative to a, you know, a, a restaurant and, you know, brewery and even a bar.
Yeah.
You sit there, at the end of the day, they still are going to need to Uber, have a designated driver. They need to be responsible, and, and things are very. a designated driver. They need to be responsible, and things are very different than they used to be. I don't think that we have the multiple locations that are in an area where you sit there and say, hey, this is like, you know, an area, the bar section of Boston.
Right. This is in Boylston Street where you're going bar to bar, and yeah.
Exactly. I didn't want to date... I'm a little bit older now, so I don't know where all those places are, but I...
That's the spot. Go ahead.
But I don't think we have those types of things. And ultimately, it is up to us to sit, you know, and that's where the... You sit there and say, geez, do I really want them open? If he were to sit there and say, yeah, we're going to have ragers until two o'clock in the morning, I'd sit there and say, that's probably not quite what we want. However, having situations where it's like, okay, the Sunday night football game goes until 11:30, you don't want to be sitting there going, get out.
Get out. Right. Yeah.
So I think that's, you know, my thinking, how I've been thinking about some of this. You wanted to answer.
You pretty much covered us. We haven't been... We've... Our model from start has been not to be anybody's last stop. Ladies, we close right now. It's 10:00 o'clock. Obviously, if there's something like that, we'd... But yeah, we have no intentions of doing anything until two in the morning, outside of like, say, somebody having a wedding or 11:30 game call, something like that. But nothing will... Nobody... I don't want to be open till two in the morning. So, we'll be good.
Excellent. Further discussion?
No.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Carries three zero zero. Thank you for coming in. Good luck.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to see you guys.
Colin, would you like me to... Why don't we... Can we go to seven H three? I think Brian's here, right? For the appointment?
Yes.
Do all those at the same time?
What?
Want to do all those at the same time?
Yeah. Why don't we do seven H? We'll do all of them. And then we can do NIMCOG, and then we'll go back in. I'm sensi-
Previous people.
I'm sensitive to folks. You know, they've been very patient. All right, so Jackie's issue?
I am pleased to inform you that Claire Newhall and Brian Ferriati have sent in letters of interest to serve associate members on the Historical Commission. Ms. Newhall has a background in the field of archives, and Mr. Ferriati is passionate about actions of the Historical Commission and would like to be more involved with the town. Additionally, with the sad passing of longtime Historical Commission member George Dupres, the Historical Commission asks that Adam Bastine be moved to an alternate member... From alternate member to a full member of the Commission.
Excellent. I don't... Anybody have any questions? I think that the folks would be good assets. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the Select Board appoint Claire Newhall and Brian Ferriati as associate members of the Historical Commission effective immediately through June 30, 2027, and Adam Bastine be appointed as a full member to the Historical Commission to fill the term of George Dupres effective immediately through June 30, 2027.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Carries three zero zero. Okay. Got that one done.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for coming in. Let's go to... Can we go to seven A? We'll have the NIMCOG folks who've been here waiting patiently. Although, I bet they love this stuff. They love listening to our stuff.
You can come to the table first.
Yeah, you can come to the table. You don't have to stand.
I like standing. Can I stand?
You can if you like. Sure.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll just really quickly give a quick overview. As this board is aware, and certainly, Select Person Gilfus is aware, as the board's representative on the Affordable Housing Trust, the Affordable Housing Trust has been working with NIMCOG, specifically Isabel and Chris, on updating our housing production plan. They have a presentation here, which will go over some high-level details of it, but this has been a very community-driven process. We've had several public tabling events. We've solicited public feedback. I know that Isabel has reached out to a lot of stakeholder groups, and Jackie has been a partner in doing that. So Chris and Mike are here to kind of walk through our efforts and I think solicit some feedback on some specific areas. So, Chris, you just tell me when to switch, and I will.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. LaSalle, Colin, I-
Colin's fine.
Colin. I used to work at the City of Lowell. It was Mr. Manager of the City of Lowell. And I have to say, I thought we had a full house of folks who were really excited about housing planning, but I know there might be some people watching at home or watching on replay. And that's one of the reasons why, working with Colin and the members of the Affordable Housing Committee, we thought this would be a great moment, not only to update the Select Board, but kind of update the public on this housing planning process. And I want to thank the committee or the Select Board for their time tonight. So first of all, who am I? Who is Mike? Who is this mysterious Isabel? We work for the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments. That's the regional planning agency, serving not just Tingsborough, but basically all the communities surrounding Lowell. And you can kind of think of us as a partner that does two things. One is, we help communities work together, and two, we work as really cheap or free consultants. And in this case, I do believe we are being supported by the district local technical assistance program at no cost to the town of Tingsborough. Go on to the next slide. And so, we're opening with why plan for housing. And for those who are familiar with a housing production plan, it is a state-regulated plan that must be updated every five years. But we see it as kind of more than that, especially because and Bill might get into the details, but Tingsborough has surpassed what they call a 10% goal of subsidized housing inventory units. And that's one of the big reasons why to do a housing production plan, because there are certain regulatory functions if you're under that 10%. But it's actually really useful to go over, when you're over 10%, to still think about housing. And it can really be a framework for discussing additional comprehensive permit projects, zoning changes, investments in affordable housing, and other actions that the town might take to take on housing challenges that might still be in the town, even though you're over that 10% goal. It also still gives you preference in certain grant applications, like the One Stop for Growth and One Stop for Housing app. I don't know what they're calling it now, but it's basically a... There's a few different... Oh, Housing Works. That's what I'm looking for. So like Mass Works, Housing Works, some other grant programs like that. We'll go on to the next slide. The timeline that we are talking about, we've kind of broken it up into three sections. We know that Tingsborough has done a lot in the last six months. MBTA communities, compliant districts have been passed. There's been other major housing developments that have been undertaken. So we're saying that these three phases are take a breath, take stock, and talk about what's next. Go to the next slide. And so this first take a breath phase has just kind of finished. But the way that we were thinking of it is, we're kind of reflecting. We're listening to what is the state of housing and what are current housing challenges in Tingsborough. So we've collected census and American Community Survey data. We have done a survey, which I'll talk about a little bit more, that's reached several dozen folks, specifically about the challenges they face. Done some outreach events. Got to thank members of the Select Board, the Affordable Housing Committee, and Colin for helping out at all of those elements. Go to the next slide. We're just now starting this next phase, which we're calling Take Stock. And that's when we're now going to start asking questions again, rather than just listening. But it's what does an ideal Tingsborough look like without housing challenges that we're going to talk about tonight. So we're going to be sharing our initial findings through Select Board update tonight. There's some social media posts that we'll be working on to share widely. We'll be undertaking some group interviews and any other strategies that the Select Board might recommend. And then finally, we'll be wrapping up the plan in November or December, and that's when we're talking about what's next. Specifically, what are the strategies to achieve the goals and the vision that we discuss? We're talking about housing workshops at key public spaces in town, private spaces. Maybe we can go to Epigram Brewery to see if we can get some young people. Center for Active Living for Older Folks. But anyway, we are talking about a variety of places to meet people where they're at and meet different groups. And even if you only hit six or seven people, those might be six or seven people who've never been part of the conversation before. So that's what we want to kind of achieve hand-in-hand with the town. We will be doing a second survey around that time, that's more focused on the strategies rather than the challenges. There will be a public comment period, and ultimately, the Planning Board and the Select Board must pass the... Must adopt the housing production plan before it's sent to the state for approval. So what have we heard so far? First of all, when we're talking about affordable housing, especially for folks at home, it's kind of an amorphous term. So we want to make sure that we're specific. When we talk about houses on the subsidized housing inventory, those typically are at 80% or less of the area median income. The area median income is $132,900. So 80% is $106,000. That can be adjusted up and down depending on family size, but that's the income limit for that type of affordable housing. We have some typical salaries there. So an average Tingsborough teacher is at 77% AMI, so would qualify for that 80% AMI. The average Massachusetts construction salary is below that as well. And then when you talk about food and accommodation, that's down to 20% AMI. So really, we're talking about a wide variety of folks who have a variety of salary that could live in this affordable housing. We also have kind of what we call naturally affordable housing. So this housing production plan, we're trying to think holistically about it. It's interesting following up that conversation about tax rates and valuation, and how the valuation has increased by quite a bit over the last few years, because that's one of the things we're wrestling with right now, which is how can a household that maybe is even a young professional household and makes 100% or 120% AMI, they still can't buy a starter home in Tingsborough or many other communities around here. So that's part of what we're talking about. That might not be subsidized, but might still think about what are the starter home opportunities. Next slide. And you can see here, these are inflation-adjusted values, where the red line is the median home sales price, the golden line is median rent, and the gray line is median income. So over the last 10 years, those income, rent, and home sales place, and you see rent bouncing up and down a lot, because there aren't very many rental units, so there's a larger margin of error. But you generally see that up until recently, they were kind of connected. But recently, we've seen bigger jumps in both the home sales price and the median rent that have highest-paced income. Next slide. We also are looking at housing cost-burdened households. That is defined as households that pay more than 30% of their income on housing, which includes rent or mortgage and some select utilities and things like that. And if you're paying more than 50%, you're considered severely burdened. And you can see, at kind of that extremely low-income category, there are... A majority of those are housing cost-burdened, or not a majority, but close to half, I mean, that are paying more than 50%. And we also see that there's a number of others. So at least about 400 households are estimated, 10% of all households are paying more than half of their income on housing costs. Another thing, and this kind of gets into that starter home thing that I mentioned, we are seeing that Tingsborough does have an increasing population of folks who are 15 to 34 years old. There was a dip in 2010, but actually, it has increased since 2000. But the amount of households headed by a young individual has not increased. It has decreased. So that means probably that more young people are still living at home, they're having a harder time getting an apartment, getting a household, and they're at risk of leaving the state entirely, leaving Tingsborough certainly, maybe leaving the state entirely because of a lack of affordable housing, that they can create a new household, rent their first apartment even. Go to the next slide. This jumps into that survey, and I realize that that is almost impossible to read, but we did get 48. We actually have about more than 50 now residents who responded, but as of the official closing period, we had 48 who responded. Who were residents of Tingsborough? We also got input from people who weren't residents of Tingsborough, because they were visiting the block party or whatever, and we can share that if people are interested. But of the 48 residents of Tingsborough, most were owners, but 32 said that they faced at least one challenge, housing challenge. And we can get to the next slide here about what those are, which was the housing challenges that we listed, where utilities were too expensive, the rent or mortgage was too expensive, housing is too big, too small, in poor condition, isn't accessible, or isn't near a place where they need to go. It's not accessible. It's not on transit or connecting to everything that's happening tonight, not near transit or whatnot. The most common response for Tingsborough residents that they said they faced was that the utilities were more too expensive. The most common challenge that they knew, that their neighbors or people they know, family members, rent or mortgage was more expensive. Next slide. And in fact, 63% of respondents knew someone who struggled with their rent or mortgage, and you can see some other kind of key factors right there. Go to the next slide. We want to finally kind of end with some of the stories we're hearing, because we thought that was just as important as the stats. We heard somebody who is retired and has a small home near a town center and loves living alone, but has to take on a tenant, is probably looking for a tenant. We heard somebody who said they were literally stuck in a basement apartment. Again, they lived, loved living and renting near Tingsborough Town Center. They're like, I love how I can walk to events like the block party that we were at, but rent kept going up, so they felt like they couldn't move their family to a better apartment and eventually to a house. There is a person who said that they have been on a waitlist for housing for five, more than five years, and wants to stay in Tingsborough. They were raised in Tingsborough. Next slide. Several folks on the survey mentioned affordable entry-level housing. That's probably why I'm mentioning it a lot. There was another person who talked about being disabled and having trouble getting into the housing that is for folks with disabilities and income-restricted. There were a few people that were talking about rent as well, and kind of too many large, new, expensive houses. So I'm going to end on how the Select Board could be involved possibly, and also what questions we have for the Select Board, but we also, Mike and I, are happy to answer any questions the Select Board has. Go to the next slide. So how can the Select Board be engaged? Please help share these findings. And education, we have some fact sheets, which I'm not sure if got shared, but there's also the social media... Awesome social media posts. One thing that we heard from the Affordable Housing Trust, which I neglected to mention, are guiding the housing production plan. It's been amazing partners so far. That education is needed. People need to understand what is affordable housing, what are the challenges, and so forth. Kind of that basic level. So please help share those things. I mentioned those workshops. We really hope to get a diverse group of people, and marketing is really important to that. Same with the survey. We want to hear any of your concerns, thoughts, or questions anytime. Of course, Colin is always accessible, but we are at NIMCOG as well. And then, as I mentioned, ultimately, the Select Board will have to adopt the housing production plan along with the Planning Board to send it to the state. So the questions we have, and I'll just kind of read them all so that I can then be done with the presentation, and it'll be... Turn it back to the Select Board. But we want to see if there are any data or stories that were a surprise or doesn't ring true. We don't want to be misled. How would you want to use the housing production plan? How can it be helpful to you? We don't want it to just be a plan that sits on a shelf, but is actually of use to the elected boards and committees of Tingsborough. Are there any housing goals you want to see the Select Board accomplish in the next five years? Do you see any of the largest barriers that we can think about how to break down those barriers in the housing production plan? And basically, is there anything else you'd like to know, and any other ways you'd like to be engaged? So, thank you so much.
Thanks, Chris. Before the board responds, if I could just add a little bit of information-
Before the board responds, if I could just add a little bit of information here. I wanted to just piggyback on a comment that Chris made. You know, I've had the benefit of being able to participate with the Affordable Housing Trust and NIMCOG at a couple of these tabling events and even just talking to residents here at Town Hall about it. And I think that it's just really important and this presentation did a good job highlighting it. This is a plan to address housing in Tingsboro. I think that because the topic of affordable housing is such a common term nowadays, that it can sometimes get swept up with like the statewide response. And of course, we talk at NIMCOG all the time about how there needs to be a regional approach. But this presentation and what we're trying to get people to see is that there is a large community of residents living in Tingsboro currently that would benefit from some of these efforts. I think the most obvious one is when we talk about housing for seniors who are looking to downsize, want to stay in Tingsboro. We've done some things toward that, but I think it's just important for those that are, you know, listening at home or will watch this presentation later, as many, many will. This isn't about solving an external problem. This is about how do we use our current inventory? How do we think creatively about how we develop housing so that it has the greatest impact to people already living in Tingsboro? That's the only caveat that I wanted to, because I think that's the part that people are surprised to hear when we talk locally with residents, that this is specific to Tingsboro.
Excellent. Thank you for that clarification. You guys can sit here if you, I mean, because we're going to, we're going to get interactive here. So you might want to.
I do, I do love standing when I'm presenting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Looking at the thing, obviously, but.
I guess I'll open it up to the board and since you are a representative, select person Gilfus, did you want to start us off?
Yeah, I just, I'm really proud to be on the Affordable Housing Trust. I think joining the select board, like I knew, I knew theoretically that we would make a difference in the lives of residents. And that was obviously part of it. But there is something so tactically valuable about the work that we're doing about the housing production plan. And it has just really meant a lot to be a part of this work so far. So thank you, Chris, thank you, NIMCOG, thank you, Isabel.
Who's under the weather?
Oh, I forgot to mention, she does send her regrets. She couldn't be here, she really wanted to be here.
We are always in communication over email, so Isabel is on the other side. And I'm just really grateful for residents who have already participated. I'm glad to see that we have 50-ish residents who have taken the survey. One thing that we are looking to do more of is get more engagement from renters because that's obviously a really big part of this journey. And especially hearing those stats about, that the slide about the 15 to 35, whatever that was of, yeah, thank you. The 15 to 34 population and then the households headed by 15 to 34. Like for me, that's really alarming. Like that's a pretty eye-opening stat. And so trying to meet residents where they are and really hear from folks that are in this demographic, I think is really important. So certainly residents that are watching, if you are a renter, we want to hear from you. You know, be a part of these conversations, be a part of the workshops, participate in the surveys. We really need this perspective, so.
Anything else?
I trust that you'll come back to me.
There'll be more, there'll be more. Mr. Cohen.
I'd like to thank select person Gilfus and everybody else on the committee. I've been on many of these five-year plans for recreation, open space, master plan and everything else. And I know it takes an awful lot of work. And this one in particular, you know, is definitely a challenging one. You know, nationwide, statewide and things worldwide, it's a challenge. So I'm looking forward to hearing different ideas. I don't have any ideas that relates to this, except I know that it's a pretty complicated issue. And I've enjoyed working with NIMCOG. I've been on the NIMCOG for Tingsboro for eight years now. And, you know, I've really enjoyed working with everybody there. And as you said, cheaper, cheap, what'd you say, cheaper, no dollars for the consulting or whatever. You know, the, the master plan took three years and everything was paid for grant by NIMCOG. And Beverly did, did an awesome job. Three years was a long time, you know, but these things take a long time. In order to make progress, you have to go through these exercises. And also, just so everybody knows, you know, if you don't have one of these five-year plans, you're never going to get any grants. And so one of the things that we've emphasized over and over again is getting more and more grants. And we've been able to do that by keeping up with all of these plans. As you said, every five years, we have to have this updated. So I just want to thank you for all the hard work.
Select person Gilfus. So a couple of things. One, thank you coming in, great presentation. I do have some, some thoughts and some questions. I do think that we're not going to solve all the problems today. This is just a starting point, but I did want to get some things on the radar. So I'd like to understand where ADUs come into play, the accessory dwelling units and what that's going to mean for us? Because we have to figure that one out either way. So I think that needs to be part of it. But I think that the big challenge with housing in Tingsboro is that I think we need residents to think differently. So, you know, for the last, I've been here for 30 years. So the challenge is getting people to think outside of, no, we don't want a lot of building in town. We're worried about the schools, we're worried about police and fire. Well, we need to think differently because our enrollment in the schools is down. You know, we have room in our schools. Yet if you look at, at those numbers and you look at the groups, the people like us, like me, that came in 30 years ago, which is a, it's a bubble. There was a bubble there. We're getting close to retirement and we're sitting there going, I can't move out of my house. Because if I sell my house, yeah, I got no place to go. And yet we like the town. You know, I, when I was 20, 20-plus years ago, my first house was, I moved to Tingsboro, built it 30 years ago. And I didn't know that I would stay because it was relatively small house, had family and had the other issue there where it was not big enough. So I added on because I didn't want to move. I liked the town. But, so we need to have those people that are over 55 to think about, okay, where's my landing spot? And then where, where are my kids going to go? I have a 23-year-old and a 21-year-old. And I sit there, my 23-year-old said, gee, am I going to be able to afford a house? And I'm like, and he does okay. So I sit there and go, yeah, you'll be able to afford a house, but it isn't going to be cheap. And so I think we need to come up with ways. I worry about that, you know, the, the thing that you said with the teacher there at 77%. Where are my teachers going to live? Where are my police officers going to live? Where are the people, when we talk about commercial, where are they going to live? And we need to think about the younger people. It's not just worrying about making sure that every lot is two plus acres and we can't have any growth. You know, I think we made a, a little bit of a, a step when we did the MBTA communities, right? We got people thinking a little bit differently. But I think a lot of people think, well, that isn't really going to happen, right? But I think we have to figure out, what are the tangible things?
We also had a hammer over our head too.
Yeah, yeah. But when I look at it, we, we need to figure out how we're going to do these things. And it's, and it's not just because we're told to do it and the state's going to tell us. We got to do it because it's the right thing. And it's, it's not like you sit there and say, oh, this right thing for the young people and the, you know, the college kids who are entitled. No, it's, it's the right thing for all of us, you know? And I think we've got to figure out, is there something that we need to know about housing in Tingsboro? We've got to crack that nut. And the reality is, I think every town around us, Lowell probably doesn't, you know, I think that that's a different demographic. They're, they're used to a little bit higher density housing. But I think the, you know, the towns that are a little more rural and exploded in the late 90s and early 2000s are all going to deal with this. And we've got to figure out how we do it in such a way that is material, right? It's not something where you just pay lip service to it. Needs to be material, but it has to be done in a gradual way so that people can adapt to that change. Because we talked about, in the last, when change happens, people don't like change. And so as much as that change might be benefiting them, we need to be understanding of how that, how we can do that change in a somewhat controlled way. You know, we're not going to sit there and pop up 1,500 units, you know, in a, in a three-year period. And people are going to be, oh yeah, I'm all excited for that. So we need to crack that nut to see how do we connect with each of the people, each of the, the major groups and what's in it for them? And address those types of situations. Because when I looked at the, the chart of all the things, everybody's got that problem. And I think some of them are housing related and some of them are things like Colin's going to talk about in his town manager report about the aggregation. The aggregation savings that are there. I sit there and go, can we get aggregation savings on natural gas? Can we, are there things that we can do with solar? Can we, so addressing a variety of these issues that are not directly related into housing and building, but are housing adjacent and making people feel comfortable. So I, I think we need to have more conversations, obviously. This isn't going to get solved here. But I know that we had the housing production plan update as one of our goals and we wanted to do it. I think we tackled it early before it expired as one of those, you know, we figured because COVID and everything had totally changed that we really needed to revisit that. So it is a, a goal of ours. And I appreciate the work that you're doing and the perspective that you have. I think it's really important because I don't have that. I don't, I, I'm older. Got a different perspective in, in some of those. But I, I think that these are all things that we've got to figure out. And, you know, love to learn what some communities are doing to tackle those types of issues well.
And one thing I will give credit to NIMCOG, every month they convene a regional managers meeting. And these are the very issues. Chris was at our last one. These are the very issues that we talked about. So it's an interesting way to get, and to your point, those issues are very different in every single community. But, and, and one thing I'll do for the board's benefit, obviously there are some pretty detailed questions here. I will share this individually. And if board members individually have specific feedback directly for NIMCOG, that can come through me and I can send it directly over to NIMCOG.
And Mr. Chair, just thinking what you were just saying about, you know, we have very different perspective about housing needs and where we are in town and where we are in our lives. And it is interesting to think, I mean, I moved to Tingsboro less than four years ago and I rent in a beautiful development that I love. But there's something about renting that is inherently a little bit scary because like at any point, your lease could not be renewed or your rent goes way up. And there's not the same arguably stability in, that some people have when owning. And there, I mean, there's pros and cons. There's like a thousand reasons why you would go one way or the other. I'm, I'm very glad to not handle a lot of tasks at my apartment. But it is really hard to imagine, like I love serving our town and I want to be here long-term. But I don't know what that's going to look like. You know, at some point, I'm going to want to not be renting, probably. And looking at the housing market right now, I really don't know how I would be able to afford to stay in Tingsboro. And so that's certainly, you know, I think that that's unfortunate. I think it's really sad to think that there are probably other people like me in town that would love to stay here and serve the community and maybe priced out. And I think that that's a lot of what we're capturing here. And so I'm, I'm glad that people are being really honest with their challenges and the things that they want to see happen. Yeah, just in terms of the, some of the questions that you ask about like, how would we use this? I think, yeah, I'm really just, I'm looking forward to see how that unfolds for us. Because I think about when we passed the MBTA Communities Act, I can remember really distinctly that residents heard us say, it is unlikely that we're going to develop in these areas because, you know, there's already housing there. And I can remember our former town planner, Eric Solerno, saying, I don't want you to get a false sense that that means that this is never going to happen. You know, I, I want to be really honest that by us passing this, this could happen. And I think that that's what you were describing, Mr. Chair, which is we are going to have to think differently and more creatively. And we have to maybe do the scary thing and think about what it looks like to expand, not just single-family homes. And how do we have more housing developments that can meet people where they are? You know, prior to coming to Tingsboro, I lived in an apartment that was a high-rise apartment, you know, it was 10-plus stories. I know that that's something that I've heard residents say that they would never want to see in Tingsboro. I wonder what that would look like. You know, I, I wonder if there is demand, like if there are other people that want that. And how do we explore population density and things that way? So, yeah, I think, just thinking about the housing production plan and the feedback that we're getting from people, having that inform our next five, 10 years, thinking about just ongoing planning.
Did you get what you wanted from us? I, I didn't know whether you were looking for some concrete things. I think Colin's idea for us to kind of absorb some of this and then send you kind of some thoughts to these questions. And maybe that's a, it's a homework where we sit there and say, I mean, I don't, to me, I didn't have any surprises in there. You know, I'm a little, I was hopeful that we'd get more people, but I always, I always feel that, don't, don't worry. That's not, that's not anything on you. I always sit there, ah, kind of hoping we get more people to show up at the election and all the, all that. But I think that the stories of people, you know, we hear it, we hear it from residents, we hear it on social media. You know, we hear about the utilities and everything. I think that, you know, there's, there's people that are challenged from a housing standpoint, from a food standpoint, from core things. We hear it, Tingsboro is not immune to those types of situations. I think many of us are fortunate enough to not experience some of that, but they, they know people who do. So we might just have some different experiences. But I didn't, I, I think we should probably just answer some of these, you know, get you some of that info later. And then maybe we, are we funneling things through Jackie? What's the best way for us to engage? Because I don't know that, you know, sitting here with us is going to get you the most bang for your buck. I think it, it might be one of those things, I don't know what the.
Yeah, I mean, I know that Colin meets more regularly with Isabel than the group. I think I'm going to try to start attending some of those meetings, at least when it's helpful for me to be there. So yeah, I think probably funnel through Colin as a consistent piece, but I'm going to try to be really dialed in.
Perfect, thank you. Great. So yeah, anything that, did we, did we meet your needs? And if there is something that's pending, can you tell us what it is? So we might give it a shot.
Mr. Chair, though, I think this has been really helpful already. I think individual answers as they come in will also be incredibly helpful. But just kind of the overall vision and concerns of the select board because I know you're tuned into the constituents. So that's been really incredibly helpful as well. So yeah, I think that's, that's the.
It appears to me that Isabel said that part of this meeting was going to be sort of asking us as part of like essentially our stakeholder engagement. So I think we probably did that organically, but were there any specific tactical questions that you wanted to make sure that we answered from our select person had perspective?
I, I don't think so. I mean, I think, yeah, it's, it's basically where we're at right now is what are the challenges and kind of high-level goals? What do you hope the housing plan can achieve? The question of how do you use, how, how do you want to use that housing plan? Hopefully will also help us construct it in such a way that it will be useful for, for you, for the planning board, et cetera. So I would say that is an important question that is really helpful in terms of, is this something that you really want to look at? You know, programs that, that are like rental, you know, like rental assistance programs or something where you're like, yeah, we want to know the best way to adjust the zoning so that you get that effect of guiding the growth that may be coming to what might be most advantageous. And I really like meet, meet where people are at, right? So you have growth anyway, so it's helpful to know the best way to shape that so that it is affordable to folks, so that it, it provides a healthy, diverse community.
Okay, and it sounds like, I think it would be helpful for us, we, we'll just share these because select persons, Schneider and Moran, to let them be able to weigh in as well. I think that, that would be a. select persons, Schneider and Moran, to let them be able to weigh in as well. I think that, that would be a, a good way for us to proceed with this.
I wonder if Tingsboro Media might be able to do a segment on this. I, I don't know if Roni's seeking people for the podcast. He's not here right now, but if you could follow up with them, um, because I think the presentation was so helpful. So if that could be covered in a, you know, really concise video that the town could then consume, that would be great.
And we do have the, there's the, um, was it, is it four pages?
Yeah, a couple of documents.
Yes. We have those, make, make those available too. I think that those are, those are important. I think that it's good background information for people, just to get them, like I said, they need to start thinking about things differently. And what, what does that mean to them?
On the website, under the Affordable Housing Trust, are all of these materials linked? Everything that we've been working on so far, the surveys and?
The, these ones are not, but I believe that the rest are, but we'll make sure these are there too now.
Just want, thinking of central place that people can access.
Fantastic. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it as always.
Thank you.
Okay, now, going backwards. Let's go to six. Let's go to six, Mr. Town Manager. Give us your report.
I would be delighted to.
You would be?
I do want to share that today we learned that Ann Paquin, who's diligently run the Neighbor to Neighbor since nineteen eighty-three, will be retiring in the new year. And so the last edition that she will publish will be the December twenty twenty-four edition. Ann, as you all know, has been a truly remarkable partner, allowing and encouraging us to post some of our most important updates in the Neighbor to Neighbor, obviously reserving prime real estate for the Town Manager's Report, but I know she regularly posts things for the Town Clerk's Office, the Police Department and so on. Um, I know she's working to figure out what the future of the Neighbor to Neighbor will be, but, um, she's been a tremendous partner. So, a well-deserved retirement. It's a lot of work as one person to run, uh, even a monthly print paper, but we've appreciated it. On the same note of celebrating local businesses, I'm happy to share that Newsweek has named Parley Farms the number one apple orchard in America. Although it was published in Newsweek at the end of August, it was featured just this weekend by CBS Boston. And I would note that not only were they the number one, they were the only one from New England to make the top 10. So remarkable there. An update on our search for Tingsboro's next police chief. I previously reported that the town had received 12 applications for the role and offered interviews to the five most qualified candidates. Those interviews took place on Friday morning in front of a panel of former police chiefs, as well as the towns panel, which was an observation panel and consisted of board members, Mr. Cohane and Mr. Moran, our Director of People and Culture, Bridget Bell, myself and our retired chief, Richard Howe. Following those interviews and based on feedback from the full panel, including the search firm, we've invited two finalists to participate in a finalist interview later this week. I am very happy with the progress that we've made. I look forward to hopefully naming Tingsboro's next chief in the next couple of weeks. On that same note, at the recommendation of Interim Chief of Police, Sean Woods, I've promoted Sergeant Cynthia Shay to the rank of Acting Lieutenant. This promotion will allow the department to maintain adequate leadership staffing during the transition. I'll work with whoever is appointed permanent chief to determine the best staffing approach moving forward. Obviously the board will be a part of that conversation. Sergeant Shay has served the town of Tingsboro for more than 25 years. In the new role as Acting Lieutenant, she will oversee the Special Services Division, which includes the School Resource Officer Program, the Detective Bureau and other specialty units. The Tingsboro Police Department was awarded fourteen thousand eight hundred and four dollars from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts through the FY-25 Municipal Road Safety Grant Program. Work under this grant will be directed to increasing road safety and minimizing the risk of injury or death due to motor vehicle accidents. They were also awarded three thousand dollars from the Department of Justice through the Bulletproof Vest Program for fiscal year twenty-five. I'm excited to share that on September twenty-sixth, Standard and Poor reaffirmed our AA+ bond rating and issued their highest credit issue rating to us for our pending fifty million dollar bond sale for the Tingsboro Middle School, which this board will approve in just a few items. Their affirmation cited our strong financial position, positive year-end results over multiple years, um, and our current, um, very strong financial policies. This not only reflects positive on our financial position, but ensures that the future bonds, including the one that you'll approve later, get favorable interest rates. Last week, we announced that the town had secured a very favorable two-year contract with First Point Power for the Community Choice Power Supply Program. The pricing is lower than our current pricing, which is set to expire in November, and it's nineteen point one percent lower than the basic rate offered by National Grid. The program, known as Energy Aggregation, was adopted in twenty seventeen and unless a resident has specifically opted out, and we've had many iterations over the last few years where we've thrown more and more people in, you are automatically on the program. That said, if you're interested in confirming that, you can call our office and we can help you or by looking at the supply services piece of your National Grid bill. If you see First Point Power, then you don't have to do anything. If you don't see it and you want to explore opting in, again, call our office. And these prices automatically take effect for anyone in the program. You don't have to do anything. You just sit tight and your December twenty twenty-four bills will show that better rate. On that same topic, I'm happy to share that in quarter two of twenty twenty-four, Tingsboro residents saved more than three hundred and forty thousand dollars total compared to National Grid Supply users from that same program, including the correspondence and the publicly posted packet is a full report with a lot more data. As the board will remember, last year, the town opted to join the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments Regional Sealer of Ways and Measures Program. Unfortunately, the staff that were assigned to the program have left NIMCOG and moved on. And so while NIMCOG works to fill the position, we're working with the Massachusetts Division of Standards to contr- contract directly with the state to provide these services. Fortunately, we fall just below the population threshold to be able to contract directly with the state. So we won't have to hire somebody and the state will bill directly for the work that they do. As soon as NIMCOG fills the position, we'll be part of that program again. There's certainly a benefit to it. But in the meantime, a lot of these inspections are coming up and we needed it to get done. The DPW pre-engineered steel building will finally go out to bid beginning on October sixteenth. The town will hold a pre-bid conference on October twenty-third and bids will be due on November sixth. The project is funded, as this board is aware, by a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar capital asset appropriation from fiscal year twenty-four, as well as matching funds from the sewer enterprise fund, which is proportional to the size of the building reserved for their use. We are fortunate that we still have leftover funding from a hundred thousand dollar earmark to cover the full cost of the design of the building. So every dollar that we have from capital in the sewer enterprise fund will go directly to the actual construction. And the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection has awarded nearly two hundred thousand dollars from their Small and Disadvantaged Public Water Suppliers Grant Program to help address PFAS for two large housing developments, including the River Crossing condominiums and the Greens Housing Complex. Both projects are served by the Tingsboro Water District.
Last week, the town manager awarded the Scribner Road Culvert Replacement Project to J.J. Phelan and Sons. Work under this project is expected to begin at the end of the month. The Reeds Across America event will be held again this year on December fourteenth. Last year was the first year the town hosted this event and we had an excellent turnout. For those who don't know, this is a community-wide affair that honors the memory of our veterans by laying wreaths on their grave. We are currently looking for volunteers to help lay wreaths on December fourteenth. And if you're interested in volunteering, please contact me. My contact information is listed here. Uh, if you're looking to purchase wreaths or donate, you can also visit the link in the Town Manager's Report. And that's all I have.
Questions, comments from the board? Let me start. Select person, Cohane. Give you a chance to start.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm all set.
Okay, select person, Gilfus. I just had to mix it up.
Make me think that we're trying to get out of here. Um, yeah, just grateful for Colin guiding me through my National Grid bill. Um, I did not know where to find that. So we spoke and he guided me through. Recommend that other people do the same. Sad and excited for Ann Paquin that she's retiring. What a service that is to our community. I mean, it's really a, a tremendous, I can't imagine the labor of love that that must be because that is a real load. So, thank you and goodbye, Ann. So sorry. And, uh, Kat, I had a question about the Reeds Across America. Which cemeteries do we lay in?
I believe all of the cemeteries.
Awesome.
Last year was all of them.
Great.
Yes.
I think that's it.
Yeah, I think there, um, I know I did my donation for wreaths. You're looking for, I went, I did it last year. Fantastic. Great event. Um, great community solemn event. I think it's, it's something that is fantastic in town. I know that other towns nearby are trying to emulate it because, um, I know Pam Russell has, has done a ton uh, to pull that together. And I think it's a fantastic event. Um, encourage people to do that. Piggybacking on what you just said, because it, 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 um, had me thinking of something right before that, but I don't know whether this is, uh, council on aging or something. I, I'd like to see if we can have something for residents to come in and ask questions about their bill, right? And sit there and say, because you had a question about the bill, right? And that's an easy one. But I know that there are residents out there that sit there and go, why did I have a, you know, my electric bill is three times what it was before? And, and have us be able to say, well, let's take a look at it and, and see, you know, maybe it's a, they're not getting the aggregation rate. Or, you know what? National Grid has a program where you can get a free assessment, um, to, to see. You might have something that's got a big draw. Um, I had a, a situation with my nephew, which didn't realize, he was a renter, didn't realize he was paying for the two other units in there and he just was paying the bill. I'm, I'm thinking if, if the issue is people with utilities and things like that, and we have people, it could be utilities, it could be their bill, right? It could be their tax bill. And explain to me my tax bill. I got this thing. What the heck is this CPA, you know, stuff? Could we put something together, um, where people can come in and, and ask those types of questions and, and, I, I know that Town Hall has available resources. I don't, I don't know if people feel as welcome there because it might not be, it's people that work for the town
Have the.
versus peers, you know? Get, get people to maybe volunteer. I, I'm, I'm spitballing here.
Certainly on the tax thing, on a daily basis, we have a handful of residents every day that come into Town Hall looking for explanations on their tax bill. And whether it's our tax office or the assessors' office, they get great answers. I will be honest, I, I'm leery, leery, weary of having town staff try to explain a National Grid bill as a National Grid user myself.
Yep.
I just pay what is on the bill and I assume they're right because what do I know? But to that point though, to the point you made, very valid about energy programs, we have information that CTI puts together. Obviously, Tingsboro doesn't have a, a social work office, but we can do a better job of making sure that information about those energy-saving programs, the rebates and even, and we started doing this the last couple of years and we do a good job of it. Even on our tax bill side, the abatements that are available, the exemptions. So, point well taken and certainly we can rethink how we're not just marketing the programs we offer, but making sure our outreach workers, that we now have two at the Council on Aging, and our materials that are available for residents when it comes to resources, fully integrate all those areas so that people know, here's what I can get. As far as the energy aggregation, we'll post another, um, sample bill that shows what they should have and we'll do a hard copy of the Council on Aging as well. Again, fortunately, this board went to great lengths, at least three times in the last couple of years to negotiate with the company to just throw everybody back in. So I think we're at a good point, but those are all certainly very valid points that we can work on.
If I could just follow up on that?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have two examples. One, um, a few weeks ago I was at work and three of my coworkers were talking about their energy bill. And we all opened up our National Grid bills on our phones and compared rates. Tingsboro had the best rate. Very proud. Um, I bragged. And exactly, like, I had a friend that was paying, I mean, just an exorbitant amount and needed to explore what that was because it didn't make sense. Um, also just this weekend, I spoke to another resident about, um, whether she was enrolled in this program. And I said, you would have had to opt out because Colin and I had talked about it. Um, and she did mention the clean energy choice. Can you speak to that just a little bit? The difference between those two programs?
Sure. One is more expensive. Uh, but one of the things that the aggregation program has evolved over the course of the last couple of years is there are residents who are willing to pay more than the going rate that I just talked about to ensure that they're getting their energy completely from clean energy sources. That one, the rates fluctuate more frequently and you are paying higher. That one you would have had to specifically opt into. So we would never throw somebody into that category. You would enroll first in our basic program. And then in the communications where it says you've been enrolled, you'd be able to opt into the renewable wind. Now, if you've, if you opted in originally in that, you will stay in that category unless you contact Colonial Power or Austin, we can connect you with Colonial Power, to go back to the cheaper basic services rate. But that's a very good point. There is a renewable option for those that are interested.
Thank you for clarifying that. I am grateful for the people who are willing to pay more for clean energy. I am not that person. So.
And, and the only thing to add on that, Colin, if, if when you're speaking with your, uh, other towns, I find that people are very eager to share information on social media and ask questions. And I don't know that they're getting good answers on some of those. Perhaps we have an opportunity to tap into that, that maybe coming into Town Hall or calling Town Hall or even going to the Council on Aging to, to get some of that. Is there a, a, a way that we can do it through social media? Just, I sit there, I don't know what, what the potential downsides are, but I feel that people are very eager to share their thoughts on, on social media. Um, maybe there's a way that we can do that. Cause I, I just look at it and say, people are, you know, they're dealing with it and they're complaining about it. And it might be, guess what? Stuff is more expensive. It, it is. I, you know, I, I didn't like my electric bill and I didn't like my water bill when it came and I didn't like my tax bill, you know, but it, as long as it's right, you sit there and go, okay, I, I'm making a decision there.
There's been quite a lot of, I, I think really good productive conversations on Facebook recently. Conversations about the bridge in the center of town. And I asked Colin for some follow-up about that because I want to make sure that I give them the right information. Conversations about enclave and just housing production stuff. So, yeah, really productive things that are, I think are meaningful to our residents and being able to give them the right answers and the right resources that tie back to what we're working on and what the town's doing. Yeah, I totally support.
Awesome. All right. Sorry. Um, I guess seven C.
We've got it.
Review, approve easement for Kendall Road. We're going to start getting, let's get on a, a quick pace here.
Absolutely. As the board will remember, the town was awarded two million dollar Mass Works grant in twenty twenty-three to support a private public project on Kendall Road between the Park and Ride and the Highway Yard. As a part of this project, a new road will be constructed that will become a shared road, providing access to the DPW yard, the Mast Dot Park and Ride, and the new warehouse development, which is fully permitted by the planning board. That road will be called Commerce Drive. And once the road is completely constructed, it will go through a similar street acceptance process that this board is familiar with, thus making it a public way. In anticipation of this project, Town Meeting in May of twenty twenty-two approved what were our Articles twenty-four and twenty-five, which gave the select board the authority to grant and receive easements at this location. So to that end, in your, in your packet this evening is an access easement between the Brock's Family Real Estate LLC in the town of Tingsboro, whereby Brock's is temporarily granting the town public access to this parcel to complete the work and use it for access to the DPW yard and the Mast Dot Park and Ride. Again, once the road is fully constructed, we'll accept it. When you accept the road, you take all the easements that a grantor gave and so it'd be null and void. The reason this is important now is because the Mass Works grant can only be spent on public access areas. And so this achieves that. Also, because Town Meeting has to accept the road, when this is completed, we'll still have access to the Highway Yard and Mast Dot. The easement was reviewed by Town Council and by the granter. As of this afternoon, there's only one piece in here that the language I think is final in here, but may need to tweak just a minor amount. One of the things we've been very cognizant of is that the development will have sewer, but it will be private sewer. The sewer won't be maintained by the Sewer Commission. It'll be up to them to maintain it. Until we accept the right-of-way, we have just been trying to be very careful that we don't accept ownership of the private sewer. So what I'm asking the board, if they'd be so kind, is to accept the easement and approve it tonight and authorize the town manager to approve non-substantive edits with the approval of Town Council. Again, there's one section, section one point two, which we think is in final form. The attorney for Brock's was traveling and hasn't been able to approve it. This will allow us to execute it. Work can't commence until the easement is recorded. And so that's why it's kind of a time-sensitive request.
Okay. Open up the board for questions. Any questions, comments? I have no questions because I'm, I'm waiting for Mr. Cohane to get his drink so that he can make a motion.
Chair, I move the select board to accept the easement for Kendall Road as presented and authorized as Town Manager to approve non-substance, substantive edits with the approval of Town Council.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain carries three zero zero. Okay. Vote to post, November fifth, twenty twenty-four election warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Included in your packet this evening is the warrant for the November fifth election. It's a general election with eight positions up on the ballot for consideration, including of course, President of the United States. As information for residents, you can visit tingsboromay.gov to learn more about early voting, apps- As information for residents, you can visit tingsboromay.gov to learn more about early voting, absentee voting, and vote by mail. There you can also find out how to register to vote, confirm your registration status, and find out what your voting location is. We have it on a scroller, so you don't have to go anywhere other than tingsboromay.gov. You'll see a big image for the town election. Tonight, we're simply looking for the Select Board to vote to post the warrant, and we will have a constable post it as required by law tomorrow morning.
And there's questions in addition to that?
There are also questions, very lengthy. And for residents that aren't sure, also on that website is a digital version of the Secretary of State's non-biased booklet that explains the questions, and we have plenty of hard copies here at the Town Clerk's Office as well.
I encourage people to read. Okay, any questions, comments on it, straightforward? Entertain a motion.
Chair, I move the Select Board post the November 5th, 2024 election warrant as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, carries 3-0-0. All right. Let's talk about the Town Meeting warrant and vote recommendations.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be looking for two votes on each article from you all this evening. One to place the article, and one to recommend or not recommend. So I will explain them. Fortunately, you've seen these all before, except for one, but I will, for the benefit of those at home, give a brief explanation. There are eight articles on this special Town Meeting warrant. At the deadline, there were no citizens petition certified by the Town Clerk to make it on the warrant, so these are the eight. Pre-Town Meeting will be a week from tomorrow, Tuesday, October 15th, here at Town Hall in this room at 6:00 PM, and then the Town Meeting is on October 22nd, 7:00 PM at the elementary school. All right, Article 1 is an appropriations for the General Fund for Fiscal Year 2025. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, such sums of money as may be necessary to fund town expenses for FY '25 as follows, or take any other action relative thereto. Again, just my standard disclaimer, this article does not increase the taxes that were approved by residents at Town Meeting. However, this would use local receipts, those are the fees that we generate through building permits, license fees, meals tax, et cetera, to cover these four funding items. The first two are relative to debt service. Again, this is a mistake that I own. Our Sewer Commission and the town entered into an agreement some years ago, whereby to reduce the betterment impact on affected parcels, the town agreed to fund a portion of the debt service for both Phase 2 and Phase 1 West. For fiscal year '25, these numbers were not included in our debt service that was approved at Town Meeting, so we need Town Meeting to authorize it today. The total for Phase 2 is $109,588.13, and the total for Phase 1 West is $32,240.84. These are not new phases, again, this is our portion of the debt service for this year. The last two items are related to collective bargaining agreements. As the Board will remember, we had six bargaining agreements expire this year. These two were not settled before the budget was approved by Town Meeting. And because they weren't settled, we didn't know how much money to include, so we require an additional appropriation to match our contractual obligation now. They were all settled in the end of July, early August. So for the Police Department, $23,567.34 to fund the difference between what Town Meeting approved in May and where the contract landed for fiscal '25 for our Superior Union, which represents the police, lieutenants, and sergeants. And then for the Communications Salary and Wages line item, we'd be looking for $21,207.14, again, from local receipts. And that would fund the difference between what Town Meeting approved for salaries and wages in the Communications Department and what was settled with our Communications Union, again, which was settled in early August.
Okay, so for each of these, why don't we, we can discuss them, then make a motion to place, and then a motion to vote. Are we good with that?
Either that, or you want me to do the place and recommend at the same time?
Uh, do them separate, because I think we need to do them separate.
We've done it both ways.
Totally up to you.
Actually, for the, for the, for, for, let's see if there's any questions where, if you feel like you'd like to do them separately, then we'll do them separately. Otherwise, we can do them all as one.
Okay.
All right, so, anybody have any questions on Article 1? This was straightforward, we've talked through this multiple times. I don't have any questions. It is what it is. So entertain a motion on both.
So I'll make a, a motion to place and recommend Article 1 appropriations, General Fund for Fiscal Year 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, both carry 3-0-0. Article 2.
Article 2 is to approve prior fiscal year bills. This is the most exciting one on here, because it requires a nine-tenths majority at Town Meeting, isn't that something? To see if the town will vote to approve payment on the following bills, which were incurred during a previous fiscal year, or take any other action relative thereto. Again, we see this on almost every Town Meeting warrant. Massachusetts general law doesn't allow us to use a current year's fiscal, current fiscal year's budget to pay bills that were incurred outside of that fiscal year. Oftentimes, these are bills that come up services rendered in June, and the bills don't come until after we close the books in August. So, we have one from a government Ford from the Engineering Department, $80.13. Tri-State Mechanical, which maintains the HVAC system on most of our public buildings from the Council on Aging for $710. And then the two sewer ones, the two National Grid ones, this is a more annoying issue, where National Grid will very periodically stop billing you your actual bill amount, and they enter into what they call an adjustment period. Once they come to terms with what your usage is, it can be six months later. In this case, it can be 12 to 24 months later, they issue you your actual bill. And so in this case, one of the accounts for the Sewer Department was $222.26, and one was more substantial, it was $4,258.67. Again, these are not because the Sewer Commission used more energy. These are because National Grid, through no fault of the town, stopped billing correctly. And the only other note I'll make about Article 2 is these are not new appropriations. These bills will be paid out of the current appropriation for fiscal year 2025.
Thank you. Questions, concerns? I'll make, I'll take a motion on both.
Chair, I move that we place and recommend approved prior fiscal year bills.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries 3-0-0. Article 3.
Thank you. Article 3 is a vote to rescind, in part, prior funding authorizations for the Community Preservation Committee to see if the town will vote to rescind a portion of the funding authorized at the May 7th, 2024 Annual Town Meeting pursuant to Article 12 on the warrant therefore, which portion authorized the expenditure of $350,000 to acquire the affordable unit identified as 10 Merrimack Way Unit C, or take any other action relative thereto. The Board will remember that at the May Town Meeting, the Affordable Housing Trust had sought $350,000 from CPC to hopefully acquire an affordable unit that was being foreclosed on. Unfortunately, the bank completed the auction before Town Meeting authorized the money, and the unit sold. Because it sold, the money is no longer needed for this specific purpose. Under the CPC regulations, the money can only return to the CPC fund balance by a vote of Town Meeting rescinding said dollar amount. So this money wasn't spent, and a vote here would put this back in CPC's fund balance.
Any questions?
None.
I will entertain a motion.
So Chair, I move that we place and recommend Article 3 rescind, in part, prior funding authorization, Community Preservation Committee fund.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, carries 3-0-0. Article 4.
Article 4 is another CPC item, and I should note that both Article 3 and Article 4 were recommended 8-0 by the Community Preservation Committee to appear on the Town Meeting warrant. Article 4, to see if the town will vote a sum of money to be appropriated or reserved from estimated annual revenues of the Community Preservation Fund for fiscal year 2025, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation as follows, or take any other action relative thereto. We have two requests here that the CPC has recommended for approval. The first is $55,000 to the Tingsboro Public Library for a kind of wide-reaching historic preservation project. A key element of it is a project they're referring to as Oral History of the Winslow School, and it'd be to buy supplies for their staff to conduct an oral history of the Winslow School and potentially expand that to other historic items in town. Another big piece is that it would restore a really old Tingsboro map that they have in their Special Collections Room. If you've never been to the Special Collections Room, it's kind of like a locked place for some of our historic artifacts. And it would allow them to purchase a display case to begin to kind of really show off the things that are in the historic or in the Special Collections Room. That's $55,000. It'd become out of the fund balance, because that's where most of the money is, but this would qualify under the Historic Preservation piece of CPC. The second item is Phase 2 of the Sherburne Road Recreation Parcel. As you'll remember, two Town Meetings ago, we allocated $800,000 for the construction of various sport court amenities on the parcel of land that was donated by Toll Brothers. That project is well underway. In fact, tomorrow, they're paving a lot of the courts, so you can drive by and physically see where everything is going to be. Right now, the first phase included basketball, pickleball, bocce courts, horseshoe pitch, shuffleboard, a pitch and putt, and more. What we're looking to do here now is to complete some of the items that were included in the Sherburne Road Open Space Committee's vision, but weren't funded by that original $800,000 allocation. Specifically, we'd be looking here to construct a pavilion on the site. We've talked at length about what that pavilion would do, but it would really create a covered gathering space on that parcel. We don't have that yet on that side of the bridge. We'd also be looking to replace about a half a mile of what is currently a very weak, at best, stone dust walkway that kind of meanders through the largest part of the open space parcel. We would replace that with a fully asphalt, completely accessible walkway. Because of the way the Planning Board granted a permit, there is probably, I'd say, about 400 feet of paved sidewalk surface along the edge of Sherburne, and then it turns into a stone dust trail that goes all around the parcel, but is completely inaccessible. And we know already that parcel is being used quite a bit by folks that live at the housing development on the right side of it, that the Derby Lane Development, and also people that have moved into Toll Brothers. And then finally, this would allow us to construct the volleyball, which was included in the bid we put out for the first phase. Unfortunately, it threw us over what we had budgeted, and some other landscaping amenities on the site. The timeliness of this is that we have a contractor mobilized who can do both the volleyball court and the sidewalks, and that we could execute, assuming Town Meeting approves this, we could execute a change order with favorable pricing and complete it as a part of this current contract. They don't do pavilions, so that's going to be a separate bid that we put out. But the Sherburne Road Open Space Committee identified all of these amenities as necessary for that parcel, and so they brought it to CPC. CPC has approved up to $550,000 for that request.
Questions?
I'm delighted by both of these items. I'm just really excited about both, so, thanks CPC.
Good.
I agree. They're both really good items, and, you know, I hadn't heard about the library and what they were planning to do, but that sounds like a great idea. And I've been very involved in the Sherburne Recreation Parcel, and I actually walked it, and I can see where everything's going to go. And I'm looking forward to being paved and having another walk-through.
Excellent. All right, I will entertain a motion.
Chair, I move that we place and recommend Article 4 appropriation, Community Preservation Committee fund.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries 3-0-0. Article 5.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Article 5 is in addition to the town's general bylaw, specifically regarding the prohibition of beaching motorboats on the shores of Lake Muscopic to see if the town will vote to amend Article X of the town's general bylaws by adding the text shown below in bold and by deleting the text shown below as stricken through. The synopsis here is this comes at a request of residents on Lake Muscopic and at the recommendation of our Police Department. As all of you have heard, and anybody that visits any of the online social media platforms knows, over the summer, Lake Muscopic becomes a very, very busy place. It has a public boat ramp on the Drakken side, and so people put their, people that don't live in the area put their jet skis and their boats in. They make a day out of it, which is wonderful. The problem is, because you have to move your trailer, it's not as simple as putting your boat in, taking it out to go to lunch. So what will happen is the shore, the public shoreline, particularly in front of where Sun City is, Lakeside Pizza, it becomes littered, if you will, with watercraft. Not only is that a nuisance particularly for the community, it presents serious public safety risks. Primarily, if our Police Department is out on the water and has to quickly get a victim of an accident to the shore, the options for them actually beaching are substantially reduced. In order to address that, we worked with the Police Department and Town Council and the Lake Association to come up with this. This would add a new section, Section 6, which would strictly prohibit beaching along public shoreline. So it won't impact you if you're just driving your jet ski up to land you own. It will only prohibit that on public land. Now, because Tingsboro and Drakken both have access, we've shared this with Drakken, whether or not they adopt it is on them, but we feel, and the Police Department feels like this is the best approach to it. The only other change here is that the bylaw, because it deals with antiquated rules on the water, many of which are now not even applicable, and the environmental police and our own police have different traffic codes they can enforce on the water, it limited the fine to be not more than $20. We didn't feel like that was enough of a inhibitor of people doing it. So, only for violations of the new Section 6, it would be $100 fine on the first offense and $250 for each subsequent offense. This bylaw is structured so that it would be enforced by either our Police Department or any other law enforcement agency that has jurisdiction. And similar to the non-criminal disposition process we use for issuing marijuana citations, say, at a school, the money would be collected and enforced by the Town Clerk's Office.
Excellent, thank you for the explanation. Questions, comments?
I know this, the Lake Muscopic residents have been looking for this, and it has been a huge problem, and I'm glad we're bringing this forward.
Then I will entertain a motion.
So Chair, I move that we place and recommend Article 5, Town General Bylaw Addition, prohibit, prohibit, prohibition, prohibition of beaching motorboats on the shore of Lake Muscopic.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries 3-0-0.
Thank you. Article-
Article 6.
Article 6 is a zoning bylaw amendment relative to the signed bylaw, which we have discussed before. Mr. Eldridge serves on the Zoning Review Committee. One of the kind of finishing touches of the Zoning Review Committee, for now, was looking at our signed bylaw, which in many places had inconsistencies. There was ambiguous language, and it was really hard to follow. So the Zoning Review Committee, under at the time, the help of our then-town planner Eric Salerno, and I kind of came in and piggybacked at the end, put together with the help of our zoning consultant, a very clear and concise replacement for a bunch of different sections. You can see, it now appears in these very organized charts. That's the most substantial change, aside from some minor edits to make things consistent. The Planning Board held a public hearing on this on Thursday, October 3rd. They had no questions or concerns, no members of the public attended, and they voted unanimously to recommend this forward to Town Meeting.
And it's connected to Article 7, which is the definitions, so.
Yes.
Just, I think one of the key things that changed, we are outlawing billboards. Because we, they weren't allowed before, but it was, it was vague. It was kind of, that's how, that's how we ended up with billboards. So, that's probably the most substantial change here. So, entertain a motion.
So Chair, I move that we place and recommend Article 6, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, Signed Bylaw.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, carries 3-0-0.
Thank you for all of my recent education on billboards. I feel like I'm much more well-versed in billboards now.
Article 7.
Article 7-
You can read about the definition.
Mr. Eldridge noted, is tied to that. It's a zoning bylaw amendment relative to signed definitions to see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaw, specifically Section 11 thereof, entitled "Definitions", by adding the text shown in bold to take any other action relative thereto. You'll see that we're adding two definitions. One clarifies what a billboard is, though, again, addressing inconsistencies. And most exciting, I would add, is a definition for a gasoline station changeable copy sign. So that we're totally clear on what that means. It is, as Mr. Eldridge noted, tied to Article 6, but it provides additional clarity, so that if we needed to enforce a provision of the bylaw, we knew exactly what a changeable copy sign at a gas station is. Again, this was also a public hearing on Thursday, October 3rd by the Planning Board, recommended unanimously to come to Town Meeting.
Questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion.
So Chair, I move that we place and recommend Article 7, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, Signed Definitions.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries 3-0-0. Article 8.
Article 8 is a borrowing and appropriation capital improvement for fiscal year 2025. This is a new one that you haven't seen yet, although I think I gave the Board a heads-up about it. To see if the town will vote to raise, appropriate, and borrow the sum of $900,000 and that the town be authorized to accept any available grant funds for the purposes of funding the following capital requests or take any other action relative thereto. Quick background on this, the Fire Department has, at least for the last four years, included in their five-year capital plan the replacement of Engine 2, which is currently housed at Station 2, which is the Lakeview Ave Station. Last year, it was their top priority. As the Board will remember, we were really focusing on using last year As the board will remember, we were really focusing on using last year as the last year. We had ARPA funds available and avoiding borrowing. And so, in conversations that Kat and I had with Chief Russell and Assistant Chief Sands, we identified items that they had listed in Fiscal 26 as being affordable within what we had for ARPA, and collectively, we felt confident that the request for the new engine could wait till Fiscal 26. So we did a switcheroo, and we didn't have to do any borrowing. Over the course of the summer, the fire engine has had more and more problems. It started small with the emergency lights not working, which was okay, because it could be the second due apparatus and go with traffic. Over time, the actual pump, which is the critical component that takes water out of the engine and throws it onto a fire, started to give them a hard time. They had a tech on-site probably three consecutive weeks over the summer into the fall, and it became clear to us about two weeks ago that we were really taking a substantial chance, saying that this could wait until May. Essentially, the fire truck is like a human. It has a spine with all this electrical cable. Everything is electric these days. It's a 2000, so it's older. It's already 24 years old, beyond the recommended useful life. And we did some things with the help of that technician to keep it operational today, but neither myself nor Chief Russell nor the technician can guarantee that that engine will continue to provide the service we needed to provide until May or longer. So when we were talking, when Chief Russell and I were talking, one of the things that I said was, if we're going to go to town meeting, I want it to be because there is a way for us to get this apparatus sooner than later. And so him and Assistant Chief Sands did a lot of work to identify that there are at least two demo units available today. Demo units are just units that are already built, that have served their purpose because a new model has come out. We used that process to get our first ambulance. It was a demo unit. Sometimes they have more than we need, but they're available and ready to go immediately. The typical wait time to build a new fire engine is up to 16 months, so kind of a big problem. On top of that, they've identified vendors who will have the core pieces of an engine available to start building in February if these demo units go before we approve the money. Whether this was considered by town meeting in October or town meeting in May, this is an item that undoubtedly would have needed to be financed. We generally allocate roughly $350,000 a year from free cash. We could likely go up to four, maybe 450. We have no ARPA funds left, so there's no way that the operating budget without borrowing could fund this. Now, there is an advantage, of course. Two weeks ago, our AA+ bond rating was affirmed. We're seeing favorable interest rates right now. The feds cut the interest rate, and we're taking advantage of that. This is a not-to-exceed amount, an important piece here. They presented to Capital Asset three quotes, all of which were below 900, some as low as in the 600s, some in the 700s, and one that was a little closer was in the low 800,000s. We will only borrow the dollar amount necessary to get an engine that meets our needs and puts it in Tingsboro as quickly as possible. We will likely do that using a short-term ban, so unlike a long-term, you know, typically you can get a 10-year note for vehicles, we will likely do a short-term ban, because I expect that, at least in May, we will need to borrow some additional items, depending on what Capital recommends. And, as I've noted, and we'll talk a little bit more on the bond sale for the middle school, there will likely be a small amount of money for the middle school we'll do through a short-term ban while we wait for the final reimbursement from the MSBA. I wanted to note also that our financial policies govern how much debt we can have, exempt debt, so not including the middle school. I had our finance department run that number. We are way, way below that. So Capital recommended it. It certainly is my recommendation, and I think the feeling that I have and the chief has is, because that side of town is one of the areas, has most, or has the most areas out of all of the town with lower water supply, whether it's because there's no hydrants or there are too few hydrants, we felt like we identified a challenge, and we had a responsibility to the town to identify that and attempt to rectify it sooner than later. Again, this would have been a borrowing item in May, and that's why we felt it was appropriate to ask Capital for their feedback, which, at their meeting on Thursday, they unanimously recommended to go forward to town meeting. That's all I've got on it.
Okay, so, I can fill in some other, because I was there. But before that, relative to the article, should it say, raise, appropriate, and borrow the sum of not to exceed 900,000? Or does it have to say-
This language comes directly from Bond Council, so I'd be very skeptical to change.
Okay, I'm just saying, because it says we're gonna borrow 900,000.
Same thing with the middle school. The middle school, it said borrow up to 84 million, or to borrow 84 million, you have to put an exact dollar amount.
Because it does say not to exceed 900,000. To add some context, so absolutely, it's been on our list for multiple years, and we've kicked the can down the road. We've talked about it. We said, all right. And this was one of those situations where something broke. And while I think the fire department has done a tremendous job of making do with what they have, I have concerns when they were explaining that, you know, oh, well, the lights might not work, and it just can't be the first one, and I, I don't feel comfortable that we're sending a good message relative to public safety with our pumper truck, which needs to get there for the reasons that Colin talked about relative to water or lack thereof. It doesn't have the lights that function, that it may not work when you turn on the pumper, it may not pump. So I look at it and say, I think they've made do with what's there, as they always do, but I think that this was not ideal as far as the timing, but I think we would be very remiss if we did not do this now. I just don't, I don't think it sends a good message to residents. I don't think it sends, you know, when you're talking about public safety relative to something like that, and this is a foundational piece of equipment, I just, I don't see, we looked at it, we said, oh, jeez, can we do this? And I know in the procurement process, I feel comfortable that Colin and Kat are gonna get us a good deal, get what's right, and only what we need, but I think that we have to recommend this to the town strongly, and I think it should be a no-brainer, but ultimately the town will decide, but I think we need this. Go ahead.
One thing I told myself I would remind folks of, and I forgot to, so I'll do it now, we haven't done a borrowing, aside from the middle school, in many years. So I just want to be abundantly clear that this is, the debt on this would be funded within the confines of the operating budget, which is tied to that 2.5% increase. So unlike the middle school, which is the debt everybody knows about, that's on top of your real estate taxes, it would be on me and Fiscal 26 to fund the payments of this within the operating budget. So it wouldn't be a tax above your taxes in the way that the middle school is. I just wanted to clarify, because we haven't done a borrowing in a few years.
Yep, it's not a debt exclusion. It's not an override. It's neither of those. It is just, it's debt that's part of our thing, and we said, we need to, one of the things that we need to figure out is, okay, how do we, how do we address these types of situations? You know, kind of smooth them out on a borrowing standpoint, because we got to get back to borrowing. We did great over the last three and a half years. Do we have, we have, did we spend all of our ARPA? I think we left it in fiscal. It's all been allocated, but we got to spend it by the end of like, well, they gave us an extra year, didn't they?
Well, we have made the deadline of December 2024 to commit it.
Correct.
And we have one year after that to fully expend it.
I thought they might have pushed it out another year, but either way-
I haven't seen it yet, but we will certainly, it'll be gone.
Yeah.
Yes, no worries there.
Okay, so any questions on the pumper truck? And I don't know if we need to describe this as more than just a fire engine, whether a pumper, whatever the chief thinks, but it, I think the fact that it's pumping water.
I think the bare minimum functionality of a fire truck is to be able to put water on a fire, and I take issue with it not doing that consistently. So, I've heard enough.
I am also all sub.
Okay, I will entertain a motion then.
So Chair, I move that we place and recommend Article Eight Borrowing and Appropriation Capital Improvement for Fiscal Year 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain that carries three zero zero. All right, we got through it? All right, we're gonna need to sign.
Oh, you have about 40 pages of things to sign tonight, so don't you worry.
Darn. All right, so let's talk about 7F.
I would be delighted to.
Let's talk about some big numbers.
I pause the presentation, and I will resume it. Thank you, Kat. Okay, here we are. All right, so as this board and a lot of people are aware, the town developed a comprehensive borrowing strategy related to the debt exclusion authorized by town meeting for the middle school project. This involved two short-term bans, which helped us fund the construction, and it culminates in a permanent bond as we approached the end of the project. To that end, to date, we've done two short-term bans. The first was $7 million in November of 2022, and most recently, $30 million in November of 2023. And the way that works is, the $7 million one was paid off in November of 2023 with the proceeds of that $30 million one. Because we are now ending the, nearing the end of the project, we're at the stage where we have to look at the long-term bond, and just so folks are aware, municipal entities do their borrowing with a borrowing firm and borrowing council. So all of this is based on weekly, monthly, and quarterly construction spending analysis that's conducted both by our owner's project manager, Left Field, and confirmed by the borrowing agency. So this isn't like, I'm not sitting in my office guessing when we'll need to borrow. It is double and triple-checked. Last week, the town through that debt agency Hilltop, which represents, I want to say, almost every municipality, sold a $50 million bond at a total interest cost of 3.68%, which is much lower than we got the last $30 million ban. You may remember that was 5%. It is lower than what we were forecasting when we did our debt exclusion presentations back in 2022, and I will make sure that the town's website, particularly, we have a page for the budget, when we start discussing Fiscal 26, accurately reflects what Fiscal 26's impact will be on residents, similar to how we had a calculator for the last budget. The way that the MSBA works is that we won't receive their final reimbursements. As you know, we're entitled to up to $28 million worth of reimbursements from the MSBA until they close out the project and conduct a post-project audit. That can take up to a year, if not more, after the project's complete. So while I'm saying we're doing our permanent $50 million bond tonight, I do expect that at some point, probably next fall, we will need to do a small short-term ban to get us through until the MSBA does their final reimbursement. And so, once the final reimbursement comes in, that money will go directly to the debt service to pay. All of this, of course, will be completed and borrowed for less than the equal to or less, I feel comfortable, although the, you know, obviously, I can't, the project's not done, less than what we were authorized to borrow up to. So tonight, there's a motion that I will put up on the screen that we need the board to vote, and we've looked at this before. It's really lengthy. Bond Council says it's all right as long as the motion is to approve the bond sale as written on the screen and included in the packet. That will get Mr. Cohane out of reading everything. I've included in here the amateurization schedule, which is probably more information than most people will want, but we'll also post a full link to the actual sale documents on the town's website. There are some people that would like to see that. But the net on this is that we got the interest rate, you may remember that a few, two months ago, we projected we'd get somewhere in the 3.75% based on what we saw on a nearby project. So 3.68 is great for us. And this now also includes the yearly debt service, which is page 11. You can see that here. And Jackie has 25 individual sheets of paper for each bond sale that each one of you will need to sign. The only thing I also just want to point out, if you look at this and you're trying to count 30 years, a reminder that in Massachusetts, the 30-year period started with our first band sale, so it's actually-
Twenty-two.
Twenty, right, because we go back to Fiscal 2022, so it's not a full 30. And with that, I will open it up to questions.
Questions, comments from the board? Nothing? I went through all the documents. Let's see. So one, great job in securing us a favorable rate. I was frankly pretty darn happy that we were gonna probably get 3.75, and the fact that we got even less than that, even more happy. Question on the short-term ban that we might have, how much is that? Any idea? Okay, I have no idea.
My guess is it'd be in the one to, probably 1 million, two would be the max. What will end up driving that, and again, I feel comfortable, our owner's project manager is probably yelling, watching this at home, that I'm even making projections, a lot of it will depend on what's left in the owner's contingency and the construction contingency, which we are on track to remain positive, but I can't imagine that we would see a short-term ban need for more than a million dollars, maybe 1.5.
Because that was where I was going next, is how does, how does the contingencies, which are favorable right now, and, you know, we're certainly gonna hold to some of those things, you know, depending upon what happens. So it does impact that. So it directly impacts, okay. Because that's kind of where I was going, is I was sitting there saying, all right, I know that we have that sitting there, because that's always the question, sitting there saying, well, I don't want to borrow anything. So it's really just dealing with some of that, some of that bridge stuff. And then, so if you do a short-term ban, are you then gonna bundle that with maybe some stuff that we do with capital and other things to get a longer-term one, to get more favorable rates, depending upon what's happening?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I had a, I had a bunch of questions for Colin that I had, because I wanted to see the full debt schedule and see how we get to 3.6. And fascinating stuff. I now know more about municipal bonds. The only other thing I would like to figure out, I don't think we got, is how are residents going to be able to go and buy our bonds? For those of us who would like to buy some munis to, you know, stay, to be tax-advantageous there.
That's a fantastic question. As soon as I figure out, I will let you know. There's an invitation, what I will say on a high level, it's an invitation to bids process, similar to what we do. They put out an RFP, and either a single buyer, or in this case, there's a lot of buyers as a part of a conglomerate, get together with all their money. They have far more money than I ever will to participate in this type of a sale, but-
I want to see if I could buy it on E-Trade. I'm sitting there going, I want to-
For those watching at home, he's talking about other municipalities, not Tingsboro, because-
It's darn. All right. Okay, well, I mean, I think this is, this is fantastic. I think this is, thank you for doing all the heavy lifting. I mean, the fact that we're getting there at a low number-
Again, I'll remind you, you have 42 pages to sign. I think you're doing the heavy lifting tonight.
You've not seen, my signature takes all of two seconds.
All right, let me pull up the-
With that, so you need a motion.
Yes.
So Chair, I move that the select board approve the bond sale as written on the screen and included in the packet.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain carries three zero zero. 7G, ratify contract amendment for interim chief of police.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the board is aware, I have named Shawn Woods interim chief of police, effective October 1st, until a permanent chief of police is made, appointment is made. At the board's last meeting and executive session, it approved a contract amendment with Shawn Woods that provided a weekly stipend of $300 on top of his normal salary as deputy chief. Since the board approved this in executive session, the open meeting law requires that you ratify it publicly this evening, and so that's what I'm looking for.
Questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Chair, I move the select board ratify the contract amendment with Shawn Woods as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain carries three zero zero. Select Board Reports. Select person Gilfus, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to congratulate the Friends of the Tingsboro Public Library for their very successful fall book sale that was this weekend. They brought in over $4,600, which is the most in a while, certainly better than this spring and last fall. So, yeah, huge kudos. There was just a tremendous volunteer effort, obviously donating books and puzzles and jewelry and all kinds of goodies, and there were tons of people that helped with setup, the day of sale, baked goods, there was bake sale, and then cleanup. So, yeah, a major effort, but a huge, a huge benefit to the community. The way that they have it set up is 20% of the book sales goes directly to the children's area of the library, so that's going to be $800 right off the top. So, yeah, just really great, really, really good turnout.
Awesome.
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Cohane?
Well, I missed last week, so I missed a- Well, I missed last week, so I missed a good, two weeks ago.
So you doubled it up?
Missed a meeting.
What's been on your mind?
I was away from town for a couple of weeks. And when I came back, a couple of days after I came back, I decided to go for a hike on the west side of town. And I drove by and I saw Oregon Road being, being paved, which was good news, right? You know, roads has been one of the key things everybody keeps talking about. And on the way back, I decided to stop at Sullivan's Ice Cream. Had a, had a very good ice cream there. I missed it for two weeks. Ate gelato, which was delicious, but Sullivan's ice cream, you know, I enjoy too. So then I stopped, you know, in our town center, and, you know, we have the bridge that a lot of people like to talk about and the platform. And I sat, sat there and, and ate my ice cream and looked at all the progress that we've made in town center and kind of reminisced a little bit about, you know, when I came on the board, one of the things that we had discussed, as Colin will know, is that, you know, we wanted to have a town center. And every year, I think we've gotten a grant and CPC money to extend the town center. And then from there, I decided to go to look at our new recreational facility and saw the whole layout there, and since I helped design it, I could walk through and I could picture where everything was going to be, and it just looked so great. And then after that, you know, drove through and watched the new condos go up and how many were going up, and how, you know, we talked about the bond for the school, a million dollars, a lot of it from the Toll Brothers, is going to go, you know, directly into paying that bond and reducing the tax impact to the residents. And then, you know, we've got the new school going on. So I just kind of had a day of a little bit of reminiscing, driving around and seeing all the progress that's been made, and was very, you know, very proud of what we've accomplished. And that's my report.
Fantastic. I hope some folks have noticed there's a little thing that's happening soon called an election. Was mentioned earlier, if you go on the, the town's website, right there, front and center, there's all the information that you need to know about voting in person, early voting. There's absentee, there's registration, still open, I think, until the twenty-sixth. There is no excuse not to vote. Don't care who you vote for, don't care what you vote for, vote. It, it's, it's really important that, you know, there's a lot of things that are happening in the world and a lot of people don't have the opportunity to vote like we do. So please vote, please, again, be, be civil in your discourse. You know, I think it's one of those things, you can be passionate about how you feel, but there's really no reason to be disrespectful. It's, it's anti-Tingsborough, I think, to, to be that way, or at least the way we want to be. So I encourage everybody to vote. Election Day is November fifth. Early voting, I think, starts the nineteenth and runs through the thirty-first. There is dates and times for all of that, so go there. Our new town clerk is working very hard to make sure that this is a smooth process. And I look forward to having a fantastic turnout, best turnout ever, is what I'm hoping for. So with that, our next meeting, it looks like we are going to have a meeting on the twenty-first. Letting everybody know, you can cross off that tentative thing. And then Fall Town Meeting, which we, we placed all the Warren articles. It'd be great to have everybody there on October twenty-second at the elementary school as, you know, normal. With that, I guess I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, carries three zero zero. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.